Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
It is 3:34, and I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We are in a special meeting this afternoon. It's day one of budget workshops for the year 2020-2021. We're scheduled Monday through Thursday of this week, beginning at 3:30 every afternoon. It's our desire to get this done in three days. We've been able to do that the last several years. The city manager and I worked on it this morning. We sort of have a stopping point for today, which if we feel like we can get to that, then we can, we'll be able to, on Tuesday and Wednesday, to finish our work. But we'll see how that plays out. I'm thankful for literally hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of work by our team to get this to the budget to where the state that it's in today. Very thankful. You've done that while you've been contending with daily day operations and a lot of other challenges that we couldn't have really written about even or dreamed up. So to Mr. Atkinson, to Mr. Kostalich, to our assistant city managers, our chiefs, but to our managers, from our managers all the way up, for everyone that's got their fingers, fingerprints on the budget, on behalf of the entire council, I say thank you. It was nice to get this late last week and have a chance to review it this weekend. And I'm excited. You know, it takes a special breed to get excited about going through the budget, but I'm one of those. I'm not going to get excited like Karen Gibson did, where she used to like to get down to the, you know, to the account level, but I've got my own sort of fixation with it. And, you know, I was reflecting this weekend, and for, by the way, Ms. Joy will be joining us shortly. She's doing city business, representing us as we prepare, already begin our preparations for the 69th legislative session of the Texas Legislature next spring. But I was thinking this weekend, council, that for six of us, this is the fifth time we've done this in a row, five consecutive years. And Randy's joining. This is Randy's third time to do this. And I started to do it a little math, and I didn't want to bother Bobby G., because he's the resident historian, but particularly with Sally's retirement last Friday. I guess he is the historian now, Bob. But it's been a long time since a council had five, excuse me, six sitting members that went through a budget process five times in a row. And I think there are some serious or some significant advantages to us, to our community for that. We hired, we were able to bring Mr. Atkinson and his team in, and this is their fourth budget. And you see not only continuity, but I think sense of purpose that is relatively similar from day one. Our priorities have not really changed, and you'll hear us talk about that today. And you'll see it reflected in the budgets that you guys have put together, and they seem to resonate with voters and people who pay fees and people who own houses and work in our community and work for wages, whatever they may do. The story of today's budget hearing will probably be the fact that staff has proposed a nearly 3% tax decrease. But I think there's more to it than that. I think the fact that they're proposing no utility fee or rate changes is significant. That's two years in a row. Mr. Atkinson will elaborate. There's some small, but very strategic investments in people. Maybe most importantly, you see this disciplined financial approach, this pay-as-you-go kind of mindset that doesn't swipe the credit card, but still allows the freedom to make investments in street maintenance in cash, $10 million, that allows us to double up on dirt roads, on what we're doing with paving dirt roads this year, doesn't throw quality-of-life investments out the window. We can still make some of those, which is important to our community. We hear about it over and over and over. Still allows us to fund the vast majority of our capital projects and vehicles with cash. Maybe more, maybe the most interesting stat, we're finally seeing the returns on this discipline, but we see our debt load, our total debt load go down 8%. 8%. Siri liked that. Even Siri heard that. She said, "Really? Total debt load down 8%? That's over $107 million in a year." And that doesn't happen without a level of commitment from the people who run the organizations that serve our citizens every day. Seven of us can really set direction, offer encouragement, provide the accountability, but it's those of you that deliver those services day in and day out that deserve the credit for the progress that we are making. So I'll end up mid my words by saying there have been promises made and a lot of great action taken, and I think results delivered. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Atkinson for the 2020-2021 City of Lubbock budget. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Welcome. I also look forward to bringing us through this in three days, and thank you for the direction and Mayor for the kind comments. I do want to add to those just briefly, and the audience today is full of the city senior staff. I've done a lot of public budgets. This will be the third I've done that was the direct result of some form of a crisis. It's the only one, it was a pandemic, but certainly some form of a crisis. It's the only time I have ever done a budget without having the benefit and the luxury of sitting face-to-face with the managers and the directors of every single operation within the city. We did that virtually this year, and I want to thank them for that. I also want to apologize. That made it so much more difficult for me to really get my hands around what they were doing and what they needed. And they were patient, and they worked through that with us. A little bit of the communication from my end going back was more difficult than it should have been. So if we have one thing that comes out of New Normal, I want to go back to doing those in person. It's just, it may drive them crazy, but it's tremendously beneficial to me. So thank you all, every one of you. Okay, Mayor, City Council, we're pleased to present to you today the proposed operating budget and capital program for fiscal year 2020-2021. We'll call this the FY21 budget as we go forward. As required, the budget that you have before you is balanced. The budget defines the program of services for the City of Lubbock for the next fiscal year. As has been noted, the budget is minimal. We have kept the budget very tight, and we'll give you examples and details as we go through the days. But while the budget is minimal, no services are cut or reduced. We have flat funding, or in many cases, we have slightly reduced funding, but you have the staff's commitment that the service the community expects will continue to be maintained. The budget, both the current year and the proposed budget, are obviously impacted by the pandemic. Council is well aware, but I'm going to just briefly remind the council and the community. The response to this began quite aggressively in March of this year. There was a visible response. That was your public health professionals, Lubbock Police, Lubbock Fire, Emergency Management, Fire Marshal's Office, Environmental Health. Many others were a visible response. We saw them on the news. We read the press releases. They were the tip of the spear. At the same time, though, was the recognition that this was going to impact our economy in a way that none could predict accurately. So your staff also produced what we thought were the projected revenue shortfalls that would come to the city. And we met those with a triggered set of proactive expense cuts. So what we thought would go down was a projection. What we were going to do in response was actual. We put those in place. Council, we talked about that late in March through April, and we've occasionally brought those back to you. Short version of that was, we developed expense cuts that were bigger than the projected revenue shortfall, and that worked. We did do that. The expense savings were greater than the reduced revenue, and that means we did not use reserves. So the City of Lubbock did not have to get into its reserves to address those revenue shortfalls. We continued to help the public to meet the pandemic, to deliver service. We took those expense cuts in stride, and we produced a savings greater than the revenue shortfall. We're proud of that, and you'll see where, number one, beginning in July, we've turned loose of some of those things, but many others we've been able to carry over, so they'll pick back up and go forward. We haven't lost them. We just pulled them down for the appropriate time. You'll also notice in the proposed budget, when we get to the various balance sheets, that we're holding a little bit more money in the excess reserves in the general fund than we typically would. Your last two years, you've seen us take those excesses, and we put them back into use on behalf of the public. I'm going to ask to hold just a little more than I normally would this year, and why? Well, we don't know when this ends. We don't have an end date or know the final duration of the pandemic. We don't know the long-term impact on the economy. We know many sectors of the economy have come back much better, and we're glad to see that. But when we look at hospitality, tourism, and travel sectors, we just don't know when that's going to come back out. So you will notice that, and you'll see that today, and we'll get into those sheets. This budget was developed to recognize both the fiscal impact of the pandemic and the need to provide services. So to that end, your budget today will propose a cut to the ad valorem, or the property tax rate, of approximately 1.64 cents. So your budget is built on a new proposed tax rate of 54.1573 cents, and these numbers are all in your budget. As a reminder, your tax rate today is 55.802, so 1.64 cents cut. The majority of that cut will come out of what we call INS, or Interest and Sinking Fund. That is the portion of the tax rate that covers the various debt obligations. As the Mayor noted, that is down across the board. That is down across the board. There's a slight reduction in the economic development and a slight reduction in the maintenance and operations, but you'll see that those are very minimal. It's predominantly in the INS. Mayor and Council, with this proposal as it is presented, the structure is designed such that the average single-family residents in Lubbock, its tax bill in the new year will be the same as it was this year. You will see a detail sheet a little bit later today that will show you that. Very proud that we can bring that in. Few little statistics for you. The property value in Lubbock, so the entire city of Lubbock, rose by approximately $688 million year-over-year. 688. Two-thirds of that increase is new property. Two-thirds is new property. The actual appraisal growth on existing properties was pretty small. It was pretty small this year. So when we talk about that, two-thirds of that is new property, and what does that mean? That's simply property that was not on the tax rolls last year, but was completed, put into the service. We began to provide service to it, and it's now rolled past January 1 of '20, so it is on the tax roll. Council, this is also the first year that we're under the Senate Bill 2 Tax Reform Calculations, and you heard us talk about that quite a bit last year. This is the new legislation. We used to call things effective tax rate and rollback tax rate. We have new terms today. We have no new revenue, which is basically the effective, and we have the voter-approved rate. 3.5% increase on the no-new-revenue limit puts you in an automatic election. That is not going to be of concern to the City of Lubbock this year. Your tax proposal comes in at 2.85% above the no-new revenue. So you're under the 3.5 trigger. And again, a reminder, that is really the new property. It's not much on the existing property. And again, single-family homes, on average, will be held flat. Highlights of the budget that we'll see. The current year, we started, City of Lubbock had 2,418 total staff members. 2,418, that's all in. That covers everything left to right, up to down. The proposed budget in front of you brings a net increase of only three. A net increase of only three. But even with that, we'll present to you later today the position that's dedicated to the Neighborhood Planner for North and East Lubbock, as detailed in our commitment to you this time last year and in the comprehensive plan. It includes succession planning, and it includes some efficiencies as we begin to change operations at the Police Department to go to the substation model. Capital came out very good, so I'll just do the general fund in brief right now. Street maintenance is funded at $10 million, $10 million in cash. That is what you have this year, and this year was a million and a half increase over the prior. It's still flat, but it's still there. All $10 million, all in cash. The unimproved are what I prefer to call the Dirt Road Residential Program. We're entering our third year of that. We've been funding it at $400,000 a year. The proposal on your desk is to fund it at $800,000, and again, to do that with cash. Another item that I know has long been discussed in this community, and truly it's a tool or a technology that's been missing from the community for a long time, is an outdoor warning system. So you have in your budget funding, and it's just under $1 million. It is cash, and that is the purchase and the installation of an outdoor warning system for Lubbock, Texas. So good to bring that one in. As it relates to fees, we have no proposed fee increases that are of general impact. And I mean by general impact, things like the water bill, wastewater bill, stormwater, solid waste, your collections rate. Those all are proposed to stay flat, and Council would ask you to remember, this will be the second year that we have been able to do that with those major funds. I do not predict that we can continue to do that, but we can do that for next year, for fiscal year '21. Finally, and I'll stop, and we'll jump into today's presentation. You talk about the general fund, and again, that's police, fire, public works, parks, that's anything we provide to the public that doesn't carry a fee to go with it, libraries. All of them are in there. Your general fund, year-over-year, has a $600,000 increase, and that is it. And we'll show you the detail of where that is here in just a bit. So all in, we're very pleased to bring this in. We think it balances those needs caused by the disruption to our economy, still balanced with the need and the ability to provide service to the community. With that, I would take any questions, and if there are none, I'll jump right into today's presentation.
Please continue, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you. Okay. Let's take a quick look at your schedule. Of course, today is August 3. Part 1 is the executive overview. We'll go in detail today to the property taxes and the proposed taxes. We'll talk about your debt and investments, and we'll talk about general fund capital. Council, if we're able to do it, I would suggest that the goal is to get us through Part 1 today. I think that'll help us a lot as we go into Tuesday and Wednesday. Part 2 will be general fund operating, internal services. You can see 3, you can see 4. Now, we've not pegged dates to 2, 3, and 4, but I would suggest those can all be completed by Wednesday, thus obviating the need to come back. Okay? Jump real quick into the year in review. Talk about sales tax. Our current year, the budget we set in today, we were budgeted at 3.3% over the prior year. Prior year was a good year, and the year before that was a good year. And up through March, we were having a really good year. Again, we were actually ahead of budget. We were ahead of that budget by a little over 3.5%. Right now, we do project, though, that we're going to come in at about 7/10 of a percent under the budget. If you remember, we've now had two months where sales tax was coming back, and by the time we finish your budget preparation and get you into August 11, we'll have another one. So we continue to narrow that down. We do think, though, that in terms of real dollars, we will end the year about 2% up over fiscal year '19, under budget, but higher than the year before. And much of that is just due to how far up we were before all of this hit. Remember that in the current year, we did increase the tax rate by one penny. That's how we got to the 55.802. Council, that was originally a 2-cent tax increase, and that tax increase was to fund the second or the final issuance related to the Public Safety Improvement Project, the $50 million. We did do the 1 cent. We did not do the 2. We did issue that $50 million, and in those summary numbers, the Mayor quoted, that's in there. So you still had those types of reductions even with that. In the current year, no water, wastewater change, no solid waste, no community-wide changes, and also, we brought in that reduction to stormwater. We did $10 million in street maintenance. That was the million and a half increase over the prior. We did $400,000 for the Dirt Road Residential. It was a good year in terms of trying to bring some staff onboard to meet the continuing growth and development of the community. You see those listed on the screen. Will not read those to you, but I want to point one out, because it's going to show back up later today. Under enterprise, we sought your permission to add an Assistant Director of Public Works. So Public Works is the largest civilian department in the city, and since the early 2000s has run without an Assistant Director. You approved that in the budget. We did fill that position actually rather quickly. I will today ask you to help me take the next step, which is the next largest civilian department that doesn't have one, which would be Parks and Recreation, to bring an Assistant Director onboard. That is one of the new adds that we will see. Last year, or current year in the general fund, $20 million in capital with no new debt. Lowhead Sea, that is a water project that continued moving forward. Council, remember, that's the project that allows us to take either of our main sources of water and push them across town, north to south, wherever that water is needed. Today, we're limited. We brought in two gateway projects, the initial phase of the McAllister Park. We purchased 88 vehicles, 93% of which were cash-funded. We did do tax notes for those more expensive, longer-life vehicles. In fact, Council, you issued that for us last Tuesday, and remember that those were issued at 1.11% interest rate. Jump forward, we're now into March, and the pandemic is here. World Health Organization said so on March 11. The United States issued its declaration on the 13th, as did the state of Texas. The City of Lubbock did the first declaration on March 16. You see the local case counts as of yesterday. Obviously, we don't have today's yet. Next page. The financial impact, we did estimate originally that revenue loss of $3.1 million, primarily general fund. It's not going to be quite that great. I'll tell you, not in terms of gross dollars, but percent of a budget, Civic Center is really one of the big ones that is going to get us. You see what we did for the financial response. These are the expense cuts. We had the hiring freeze, discretionary spending, and certain cash capital projects. That was designed to yield a positive variance of just under $2 million, and it did. The savings were real. Our projections for the shortfall were a little high. We came out in very good shape. As we move forward, City Council was very aggressive in trying to support the local economy, and these are just direct city programs here. Remember that there's been a $2 million program that ran through your local economic development organizations, and I believe we're up to about 1.6 in the privately funded relief fund that went out. But City Council of Lubbock approved $3 million in total assistance to families or businesses here in Lubbock, and of that, about $2.5 million was out the door in nine days. So that moved fast, and it really shows the need, but those dollars were put in the hands of the people that needed the most. We have two sites going that are community testing right now for coronavirus. Of course, the Rogers site, that's partnership with Division of Emergency Management. It continues, and we now have the Combest site. What you don't see on here is Patterson. The Patterson Library closed to testing Friday. It is now undergoing its disinfection, its deep cleaning this week, and if it hasn't already gone out, it will soon go out. That library will reopen to the public on the 15th. That's the weekend before school starts. So it will be back and will be providing its services. Curbside meal program through the senior program, over 7,800 meals, and that was as of last Tuesday, 4,700 masks handed out to go with those. The kids' meal program, 1,822, that number is smaller because it began much later. When the schools had to roll out is when we rolled in. Moving, you can see what the libraries did. If you remember, the libraries were closed for quite a while to in-person, but we didn't quit providing books. We didn't quit providing services, and you see there how we did it. Contact tracing obviously has been a major, major issue for us, very important. We have ramped to the point that there are 14 members of the Public Health Department, actually, as of today, there's a few more added to that, and 21 other staff members, and they come literally from all areas of the city. That group is doing over 300 contacts per day. 300 contacts per day. We've delivered over a million items of PPE. That's in addition to the 120,000 masks that the Chamber of Commerce handed out for us. So we've been active. The city, I think, is doing everything it can possibly do to support the public. With that, we're going to jump into the overview of the FY21 budget. Everybody ready? Okay. Again, we're delivering services while balancing the impacts of the pandemic. The property taxes set the tax rate that requires no additional property tax for the average single-family residents, while at the same time capturing the value of new properties that have come on the roll since the last time we did this. We want to reduce the interest and sinking rate. Again, this is a 1.64 cents or pennies reduction. If you'll move down to the table there in the middle, you see the current tax rate, 55.802, proposed tax rate, 54.1573. And if you look on that last line that says interest and sinking, you see where the reduction is. 1.1 of those 1.64 cents came off of the interest in sinking. We have had a bit of a reduction to economic development and the maintenance and operation. That is the tax rate proposal. That is what we will show in greater detail when we get to that section today. Sales tax, again, we are trending okay year-over-year, but we're short of the budget. So the new proposal, the FY21 proposal, is going to be 2.5% over our actual for this year, not that original budget that was up over 3%, but what we think we're actually going to get now. So we've trued it up, and this becomes our new base that we go forward. Next. Again, you see those major rate categories of stormwater, water, wastewater, solid waste, no change. Solid waste at the landfill, we are asking for 25 cents per ton tipping fee. That's coming across the scale. That is hardly ever a residential consumer. And 48 cents a ton for special waste or more hazardous type waste. There are other changes to fees for service proposed, but those are all to a unique project, property, or it's an individual license, and you'll see those later on. Staffing needs, if you add that up real quickly, you'll see that there are six. I told you we had a plus-three FTE. That is because we have one major division, Lubbock Power and Light, that is actually reducing FTEs by three. So there's six new, but in total, it's only three. Neighborhood Planner, Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation, one additional Communication Supervisor in the Police Department Communication Center. This next one, Emergency Management Outdoor Warning Logistics Technician. This is the individual that will be charged with the care, feeding, and operation of your outdoor warning system. And if we are going to buy that system, I wish to buy that person as soon as possible so that they will be here as that system is built, installed, and designed to function. The videographer for your marketing, your communications and marketing, that one's actually a part-time position, and we're bringing it to actually a part-time position, and we're bringing it to full-time. And then in the Enterprise Funds, we have one End-User Support Specialist for IT. Would note that that one is actually funded by reducing some other expenses. So that is your staffing summary. Again, and I hope you all don't get tired of hearing me say it, but again, 10 million for street maintenance and 800,000 for dirt roads. For the remainder of your capital vehicles and equipment, that totals 54.4 million. That is divided into 60 projects, 95% of which are cash-funded. We do have three that we will propose for 10-year debt funding. There's a Water/Wastewater Revenue Bond, 7.4 million for a certificative obligation. That's going to be a large street project. We'll show you that when we get into the capital. And we are proposing to do this, actually, Blue, that's two, and the third is the tax notes. We're proposing to do this in October or November. The market rates are so favorable to us right now, we think it would not be wise if we didn't jump and go as quick as we could. So the third is the tax note. And Counsel, you'll see a sheet here in a moment that's different than you've seen before, but one of the biggest places we've had to cut this year is in the fleet. So if you remember, last year, we purchased 88 vehicles. This year, I can only afford 61. 92% of those will be cash-funded. We will need a tax note for three collection trucks, a large motor grader, and what's called a screener. That's one of the tools we use for the material that's placed in the dirt alleys. Okay? But that's 27 vehicles shy. We've gone through a tremendous effort in this, now my fourth year, to squeeze every mile or every hour out of our vehicles and equipment. We have held on to those. Last year was the first year we kind of jumped up and started trying to get back on the path. I'm sure you've noticed, Police Department still has some of those Crown Vics that we took out of storage. There are just not very many of them left. So fleet will be a challenge in the second year, the FY22, but just note that for me if you would. So if we talk about key points and future challenges, this is the slide and its partner that are different. Again, we're maintaining service. We're supporting the council's priorities. We're about as flat as you can get a budget of this size. This budget in total, you'll see in a minute, is $877 million. It's relatively flat. The general fund is very flat. We're going to reduce the tax rate. We have minimal staff changes. We're maintaining street maintenance, dirt road. We're adding outdoor warning. We're hitting neighborhood planning. We're continuing to grow our ability to communicate with the public. We're using the CARE Act dollars. We have those, and certainly, the airport and transit are the two we'll focus on the most. But we're using those for what we're allowed to do. We're reducing the overall debt load. Unfortunately, I do not have employee increases in the budget. So at the same time, I am not putting employee health plan increases out. It's been a tough year, but our people have jobs, and they work, and they have paychecks. I'm asking to let the city eat those split increases in the health plan for one year. We know we'll have to catch back up, but I don't want to do it this year. Next. So the future challenges when you build a budget this way. Certainly, our number-one assets are employees. We'll have to go back to work for them. When the CARES Act funding rolls off for airport and transit, and really, it's going to be more transit. Transit actually came out of the general fund this year because of the CARES Act money. We're going to ride that as far as we can ride it, but it will have an end date to it. And they told me not to say it, but I can't help it. We've got a little longer runway for the airport. They warned me not to do that. So the next bullet bears a little explanation. The second, potential second year of taxable value reduction versus our models. There was an unusual thing that occurred this year. When you start a public budget, you're provided what's called a preliminary value. And that's what it is. It's an estimate. We always know it's an estimate, and it's never exact when it comes out. You expect that, and you build in a range. Between our preliminary value that we started the budget with and the certified value that becomes the budget number, which actually came in two Fridays ago at 6:00 PM, between those two was a net reduction in taxable value of $500 million. It threw us kind of into a loop for a weekend there. Between that weekend and over the course of the following week, we were able to work that back out. But to give you an example, $500 million is huge, and that's a number that's hard to put in perspective. It meant a full penny on the amount that we could cut your tax rate. It meant a full penny on what we could have cut that tax rate. It was a big swing. Big swing. If that is to occur a second time, which would be this exact time next year, that is going to be a problem in our model. Because when you think about our total increase versus the part that was new property, what you will calculate then is the existing property's very, very small in total increase in appraised value. It's very unusual. The new number was not unusual at all. That's pretty typical for us. But that small, small amount that was applied to appraisal growth was very little. We're going to have to watch that very carefully. Fleet, talked to that earlier. Fleet replacement this year is about as skinny as we can make it, and I will have to get us back on our replacement schedule, and that's especially for fire and for police. Our maintenance budget this year, we did have to up it. So maintenance went up. I don't want to continue to up maintenance. I want to get back into the right kind of vehicles and pull it back down. But my increase in maintenance is less than what it would have cost to put all the rest of the vehicles back. Okay? So that one was a balancing act. Health insurance and general insurance, pretty significant increases that you'll see. Health, not so much, but general insurance, pretty significant. There were some large claims this year. We, again, did not, we did not assign any more of the health costs back to the employees. But if we're going to maintain our new health plan model that has delivered these savings, I'll have to get back into that model, but not this coming year. Next. So now we get into the big number sheets. Summary of all funding sources. This sheet is in millions. It's in millions. So if you look across the top on the property tax line, you carry that all the way over to the right, you'll see year over year, it's about a $2.345 million increase in the property tax. And again, what you're going to see later is that's new property. So there are that. The sales and use taxes, you see the numbers carry over. And stop me on any of these that you wish to discuss. Franchise fee, fee for service, fees and fines has a reduction. Other revenue is very flat. The transfers slightly up. Again, I said I want to hold a little extra money in the general fund reserve so we're not using excess reserves. So that's why you see that number turn over to a negative. Internal Service. Enterprise Fund is up. We will show you where that is here in just a bit. Special Revenue is down. The line on here that I enjoy the most is your Debt Service Fund. And you'll see that that dropped from 64.5 million to 42.5 million. So $22 million reduction in that. Mr. Kostalich and team have presented your charts this year in a waterfall format. So we'll take a look and walk through those. On the far left, that is current year. All dollar sources for the city added up to 856.6 million. Go all the way to the far right, it's 877.6 million. So where is that change? You can see the change. The blue is the increase. The red is the decrease. The bottom is your label. So the general fund is up $600,000, 0.6. Airport, about 4.2. That is the feed-in of the CARE dollars that you see coming into that. Lubbock Power and Light is up 41.5. You see now another offset. Stormwater down 400,000. Water/Wastewater, 2.1 million. Other Enterprise Funds, one-half. Internal Service up just a little, 4.8. Your special revenues are down. Your debt service down 22 million. So you net the blues and the reds, and that's where you end up with the $20 million change. Counsel, any questions on that chart? Looked at it a different way. Here's your total funding sources as a pie chart. So over half of all the dollars that come into the city are Enterprise Funds. These are fee for service. It's your water bill, wastewater bill, it's your light bill, et cetera. I want to point out, and I think Counsel's all very well aware of this, property tax is 8% of our revenue. We're going to spend the most of our time to talk about it. It's not the largest funding source. And in fact, sales tax is actually greater. And I think some of you all have listened to me at the civic circuits before, and 100% of the property tax that comes in for maintenance and operations will not fund the entirety of the Lubbock Police Department for a year. We live and die by the sales tax. And you see that reflected in this case. Next. We're going to do the same set of numbers, and we'll do these on expense side now. I'll go ahead and point out on the very bottom line, the total expense line, you see 867 million. And you saw 877 on the prior page. So where is the difference? Those are the Enterprise Funds taking dollars to reserve. That's really where that comes into place. So really, a lot of the same thing. Our administrative services portion of the general fund is down. Culture and Recreation, down. Development Services is up, and Public Works is up a little. Public Safety went up, and this is the totality of your Police Department, Fire Department, Emergency Management, Animal Services, and Public Health. Totality of the increase amongst those departments is $1 million. $1 million. Transfers are down. Internal Service, Enterprise, and again, you saw the Enterprise increase two slides ago. Special Revenue, down. And again, Debt Service is down. All in, that's 1.6% change as a full rollout. Next page. So here's the same waterfall chart on the expense side. So to the left, current year, 853.9. To the right, the proposed year, 867.9. And you see the same things that we had on the prior slide. Significant increase is going to be in the Internal Service Fund, LP and L, and then offset by the various reductions. Next page. So Enterprise has pie charts, or expense is pie chart. You see the 56% of the Enterprise. If you set that off, what's left of that pie is everything else that we do. The one we like to highlight, Public Safety's 15% of the total cost of the city. It's greater than that as a percent of the general fund, but it's 15% of the whole city. It's where we put our dollars. It's where we put our people. Questions on expense or on revenue?
Mr. Atkinson, we're going to go into more depth, but there's been no, you know, there's been a lot of discussion in the country about how you fund public safety. And on that, the slide you went through, I guess, a couple before that, we talked about public safety would actually not be decreasing, but even in a tough time like this, would be increasing. Do you want to wait till we get to that, go into that a little bit more? I mean, that's probably a highlight of today, too. It's certainly, I don't think there's any support up here for this idea of defunding police. I think we expect, you know, law enforcement to change with the times and to find ways to do things better. We also realize that we've delegated a lot of things to them that we used to not do. Do you have any comments about that?
Thank you. I'd be glad to. We'll hit some details.
I think it's appropriate. I know we'll go into a deep, a little deeper dive.
We'll do details on the operating budget, but I'm going to speak at a high level to that. No proposal from staff to decrease it, and yet, a small increase. Would we like to do more? Absolutely. I do not like getting off the path that we have been on in the past of continuing to add 10 to 12 officers per year. But I've got a lot of vacancies. I've got a lot of people in the pipeline right now. If I even could afford those positions, I don't think we can fill them. Kudos to Chief Mitchell, to the three Assistant Chiefs, Captain Watkins, as we've gone through all of this. They have come up with continually improving ways to use the dollars they have to do more with. And we will get to those, and you'll see them in detail. It's lateral programs to bring in people that we can put on the streets quicker and incentivize a way to do that. It's taking existing staff and looking at how they're currently assigned, and knowing we're moving into a major reorganization when we go to the substations. How can they best start slotting those individuals? We've held them tight on their cars. The majority of the vehicle purchases this year are police, but police use a lot of cars. Remember, every sworn officer in Lubbock has a car. So they continue to refine that, and they deserve a ton of credit for it. We can't keep them running strictly on efficiency long-term, but we can for this year. And you'll see more of the following. Okay. Try to put out just some large metrics in total. Try to speak to some of the questions, certainly, that Blue and I get over the course of a year, and Counsel, I think you do as well. So the chart on here is from FY12 to FY21. And this is the total general fund spending. So the green line is how much you've spent on the general fund. And if you go in here, you can see that in '12, we spent a little over $150 million on the general fund, and we're going to spend about $225 million on the general fund. So has it gone up? Yeah. But if you only had that green line, what you're ignoring is what's happened in the community. The community has grown. The community's gotten bigger geographically. It's gotten bigger in terms of population. So what we've done with your blue line is take that cost per capita, the cost per capita. So per person in Lubbock in 2012, it was $729. For the budget I'm showing you today, it's $740. That's a $1.10 increase per year. What do you get for $740? We've listed them off several times today. That is all of your police, your fire, your parks, your Public Works. It's all of your libraries. It's your community centers, your senior centers. It's, again, those general things that we're able to bring to the public for which we don't swipe the card when we get there. So I'm a little bit jaded, but I'll contend, that's a pretty good value. That's a lot. It's a lot being brought forward for what we're asking. But more important, and especially with this Counsel, look at where that line picks up in FY16. Look at where that blue line picks up in FY16. Even in the good years, we've held that very tight. We've provided more services delivered by more people, but not as many more as you might think, because that'll be the next one. So anybody wishes to use that slide, they're free to do so. So the general fund staffing in Lubbock, per 1,000 population, you could divide it further to per capita, but per 1,000 is less than what the staffing level was 10 years ago. So on this one, the green line, that's the total number of the employees in the general fund. And then the blue line takes that to the per 1,000. So the program of services you'll consider today will be delivered basically with six city employees per 1,000 population. And about 1.7 of those is in the Police Department alone. So I think we've held it pretty tight.
Just to check your eyesight, for those of you that, out in the audience in particular.
Yeah. The audience will go to line nine and read from right to left, please.
We've got optometrists outside. You can go either left or right.
Counsel, you may wish to instruct us to break this apart, but we've attempted to put all of your reserve funds in front of you on a single page. The general fund, see it at the top. You're used to seeing these calculations. In the past, we've given them to you vertically. They're horizontal this year, so they do read from left to right. Cash, when we started the current fiscal year budget, that's available cash, 9/30 of '19. What happened to that cash during the current year? Revenue, take out the policy reserve, and remember, the policies are different. If you're curious, it's on the far right-hand side. So the general fund is 20% of expense. So the general fund is twenty percent of expense. And then we try to come up with excess reserve. So the general fund is five point eight one-one million dollars. That is our projected excess reserve. We do that same calculation as we work through FY twenty-one and where we end up on it. Carry that down the page, you see the airport. The airport has significant excess reserves right now. And what you're seeing is us being able to use the care dollars that came in, rather than spending out of reserves to keep your airport whole. Water, wastewater, that's a large number, but that's a large fund. You've got some long-term forecasts that we'll show you when we get into that individual fund. Civic Center, Stormwater, Cemetery, Lake Allen-Henry. Fleet, I'm going to highlight that for just a minute, we'll do detail when we get to the operating. The fleet fund's carrying a lot of extra expense right now, and it's going to. So I do not like that number being there. It's real. It is real. We will get it changed, but I've got to catch up after the end of this next year on that one. See, the health plan, recall that we have, number one, increased the policy reserves in the health plan. And we did that because we changed the stop-loss insurance. And so if we have a catastrophic or a shock claim, we have to cover that up to the seven hundred and forty-nine nine ninety-nine number before that stop-loss. We did that using some calculations that said we were carrying stop-loss at two fifty, and it was very expensive. It paid a bunch, but it was very expensive. And our math said we think that at worst we'll come out even. Right now, we're still coming out a little bit better, but to be safe, we need to keep those dollars sitting out there. See, the information technology fund, we do the radio shop, it's a separate fund. Same thing with the print shop, it's a very minor fund. Your warehouse, risk management, again, cost of insurance went up this year, or is going up this year. Moving down into special revenue, you've got the Gateway Streets, Cable Services, Debt Service, Hotel Occupancy Tax. We're going to be really glad we have that, I think, over the next little bit. Economic Development Fund, and then you see three of your TIFs, being Central Business, District Lubbock Business Park, North Overton. I think you'll be pleased to see that that North Overton TIF has really come up, and it has dollars available to it. North and East Lubbock NNI, North and East Lubbock Neighborhood and Infrastructure Fund. So, walk with me real quick. These are the oil and gas revenues that come in. We've taken that split, and we've taken all administrative costs out of it, and we're winding out the portion of it that goes over to Central Business. So this coming year's the last time that it shares. Is that right? Or is it all the way out? One more?
Should be out this year.
It's out this year.
It's out.
It's out this year. So a hundred percent of that revenue.
That's correct.
Now, its revenue didn't do real good this year. But it does have a reserve fund that's going to allow us to continue to deliver those services. We have to keep an eye on it. If the price of oil and the price of gas will stabilize, gas today still is not there. Oil's okay, but it's probably not where everybody wants it to be, certainly not where this fund wants it to be. So if you're asked a question, does the city really have reserves, and how much, how many reserves do you really have? What's those totals? Here's a chance for you to see those in one page.
Okay, this is a good place to pause. Counsel, comments or questions on the first? We're going to get into property tax next, as I recall. So, comments or questions on the, either the review of nineteen twenty, or the high level that you've seen for twenty, twenty twenty-one? Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson, you mentioned the ability to fund the emergency warning system. If I recall, I'd seen studies for that warning, a warning system of that type in the past, and it was several million dollars. And today, you're estimating that that would cost about a million dollars. Is that an improvement in technology that brings that cost down? And do you recall what? For some reason, thirteen million sticks in my mind, but I can't remember what an original estimate was on that several years ago.
I think your memory is very good. There is a study that was done probably about eight, maybe nine years ago, that had it over ten million dollars, and thirteen was really close. We've had quotes in my tenure that have had us up a little over three million dollars to do the system. It's an improvement in technology. The only direct wiring that goes into these systems today is the electricity to power it. They are much more efficient, it's done through radio triggering. I still, and in fact, Mr. Maudie's here, and he can tell you, I have pushed and prodded and poked. It's just so much better than it has been, and the coverage is better. I believe the system will show you in greater detail as a thirty-nine pole system. Now, every year that the city changes, the poles will change. But it starts as a thirty-nine pole system. The triggering is all radio and IP-type triggering. They are much more energy efficient, they're, you're actually not really going to notice them. So the number that we have is a quote that's less than ninety days old from the premier provider of these systems, and it does have a small contingency on top of it. Now, and if I might, and I apologize, should have said this earlier, I will come back to you in the following year for a couple of smaller pieces to go with it, not to make them operate. This year, I'm asking to buy the system, the warning system, and get it up, and the technician. At some point, I'm going to need to stock in spares. A truck of their own, a bucket truck, we'll be able to borrow and beg and steal trucks from within ourselves for the next year. But for its long-term maintenance, it needs to have its own aerial truck, and I'll need a bit of a storage space for it. I don't think that's going to be major, but I will need a storage space for that stuff.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is the right place to ask this question, and if it's not, we can deal with it as we go further into the budget and just put a pin in it. I'm curious about the new additional positions and how they, how they'll function. I just, at first glance, I can see how they can really be impactful and needed, but I really want to be, for us to really get into how they'll function and what their true responsibilities will be, so that they actually benefit the city and the citizens. Let me see, what else I got? Hold on just a second. I wrote down some other stuff. Could you just go back for me and talk a little bit of how we're able to, with the reduction in the taxes, the property taxes, and why it's better to do, kind of explain for us why it's better to take the larger reduction in interest and sinking?
Good question.
That's a great question, and actually, this very next section, we'll get into the tax rate in mind-numbing detail. As it relates to those positions, I'll speak to two of the general fund positions off the top of my head. Of course, the Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation is exactly what that sounds like. There is not a number two over that entire operation. So that's park operations, that's park maintenance, that's indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, community centers, senior centers, or adult activity centers. That division has run for far too long without succession planning and without backup. That's a lot to put on one person, and to expect by extension, that's a lot if you have to reach down to others within that group and pull them up. So it, we need it for succession, and we need it to be realistically staffed to run it. The Neighborhood Planner, this is a direct outgrowth of Plan Lubbock twenty forty. And in fact, you can turn to that, I believe it's in Chapter Seven, a little of it's in Chapter Four, but it's mainly in Seven. And that's where it talks in great detail about several things, many of which are already in progress. Council helped us make the choice that we would prioritize the outputs of that plan. And you've got those biggest, most expensive ones in progress right now. They'll all wrap up at different phases, but that's your Capital Improvement Advisory Committee and the impact fees, and that's your Unified Development Code. UDC is going to change the world for us. The next one on that list was the Neighborhood Planner. We talked to you last year and said it would be one year out, and it's here today. Their task, their charge, they'll be under the Planning Department. Their task is on a unique neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis in East and North Lubbock. Develop catalogs, and that's what's here, what's not here. It's to reach out for what is assistance, these things are available, or programs, and many of those may be government programs, but not all. These are things that are available and ultimately end up with the need. This is what's most needed, and you can drill it down. It's not East Lubbock as a whole or North Lubbock as a whole. It's Cherry Point, it's Chapman Hill, it's Arnett Benson. And they'll begin to work their way through that. A big part of what the plan references is engaging those neighborhoods. Engagement, and that's where that's, where that's coming. Police Communication Supervisor is to have a Communication Supervisor per shift and backfield coverage available. That's all the nine-one-one department, if I didn't say that earlier.
I think those are, those couple ones are the biggest one and all. As we go further, we'll go to some other things, but those are the ones that kind of stood out forward right there, and then we'll discuss about the tax rate and change as we get further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Other comments or questions? Okay, let's go to the tax rate, please, or the property tax piece summary.
Okay. Council's used to seeing these slides, these are the current year property tax rate comparisons. This one is the comparable large cities. And you see where Lubbock sits in the universe that encompasses Amarillo all the way out to El Paso. The red line is the average thereof. Now, this slide and the next couple will be updated. One of the features of SB two is this new online database of tax rates. So we will be turning in ours, once we've made the proposal to you, just as the other cities will. And by the time you will be asked to actually vote on a tax rate, you'll see how this compares to the proposed year. But what you've got is the actual year. So you see this slide, you see where Lubbock sits. The next one, we've gotten to populations greater than a hundred and twenty thousand, so we've added the Midlands, the Odesses, and some others to that as you go forward. And you see where Lubbock compares. Thank you. And you see where Lubbock compares to others, and again, the red line being the average line. Some interesting, you know, things, you look at how different cities throughout the state do things versus where we stand. And we'd certainly always like to be farther to the left on this particular chart, but we're not in a bad spot. We're not in a bad spot at all. Next.
I might, I might add, just as for sake of comparison, that if you, if you look at the, we're the eleventh-largest city in the state based upon the last Census Bureau estimates. You know, I think the two very best, or the best comparisons to us are Corpus and Laredo. They're the eighth and tenth-largest cities in the state. And they're both remote enough that they have to provide all their services, unlike Arlington, who's the seventh, and Plano is the ninth, and Garland and Irving, which are twelfth and thirteenth. I think those are better comparisons. And I think as you look at this, you'll see that we compare pretty favorably to those two cities.
Good point. So this one is a twenty-year history. The stacked pieces of those bars represent the portion of the tax rate that goes to one of the three unique uses. So obviously, the largest bar, the green bar, that's your Maintenance and Operations. Now, if you look back into FY two thousand and two, the Maintenance and Operations portion of your tax rate was forty-two point eight cents. If you go all the way to the right for the proposed tax rate, it's thirty-nine point eight. Thirty-nine point eight. Look now at the blue right above it. The blue is the Interest in Sinking Fund. That is the portion of the tax rate that is solely dedicated to the payment of debt. Now, interest in sinking dollars literally are in a separate bucket, and they cannot be used for anything other than the payment of those debts. And I'm going to take us into that, why we're reducing it in a minute. But just know that when those dollars are in that bucket, they can't come out and be used for anything else. And by law, if the debt that is being paid with the pennies that are inside that bucket is paid off, those dollars then cannot be moved to MNO unless you claim a tax increase. Say that again. Dollars that have been in that INS fund can never come into the MNO fund unless you claim a tax increase. You're not actually taking an extra dollar out of anybody's pocket. You're not changing a tax bill. Because of the law around it is a distinct bucket, if you move that dollar, I no longer need to pay this debt, this debt is gone. It's completely defeased, it's out of the way. I either have to give the dollars back through a rate reduction, or if I put it into MNO, it will calculate as a tax increase. So you could come in and hit your three-and-a-half percent tax increase and have less money than you did the day before. It sometimes doesn't make sense, but that's how it works. In FY two oh two, it was eleven point one-one-five cents, went to INS. Current year, the next bar to the right, next to last bar to the right, current year, it's thirteen point one, and our proposal is to take it down to twelve. So here's why the reduction is coming out of the INS. Recall, we've already talked about the significant paydown in the general fund debt. As we have done refundings, we have also taken debt that was inside the general fund that belonged to an enterprise fund, and we've put it over in the enterprise fund. That's that second set of ratings that we've been able, you know, to achieve. We have accumulated what's called an INS reserve, so there is a separate reserve account that goes to the INS tax levy. We have accumulated significant dollars in there. They can't be spent for anything other than the payment of the debt. So it's time now to start taking those reserves and paying them out. When we're, when the debt's gone, if that money's still there, I can't, we're not giving the public any benefit. So Blue and his team have done very sophisticated modeling. With the debt reduction, with debt that's moved out where it goes back into the enterprise funds, we can start spending down now that reserve fund while at the same time reducing the, if we don't reduce the tax rate, it's filling it back up the whole time we're doing that. And we're not getting the benefit of the dollars. The public's not getting the benefit of the dollars. So that is all this is. Now, you did note that we called out some short-term issuances. Those are factored in. Those do not result in us upping that INS rate next year. We're not going to say it's down this year, but we'll take it back the next year. We won't do that. The model doesn't require us. How much, how much money's in the INS reserve? Yeah, a little better than five million dollars, and that money's stranded. So let's use it for its intended purpose and take less from the public while we're done it. So does that, does that speak to the question?
It does, and it sounds good. I've just wanted to be clear, and I didn't know, we may have some citizens out listening that really wanted to hear that and understand what that process is, so thank you.
You bet. Okay, so the top bar, I'll call it yellow, somebody may correct me, but I'll call it yellow. In two thousand and two, you had three cents that went over to economic development. Current year, about two point three cents, proposed year, about two point two and a half cents, so slight reduction. But counsel, recall that a decision was made a number of years ago, and I believe it was between twelve and thirteen, FY twelve and FY thirteen, to take a piece of the economic development tax rate and apply that to your transit system. So that this was not all dollars lost to economic development, it was just more a direct payment than going around the corner with it. Okay? So again, the two flags that are up there, current tax rate, fifty-five point eight zero two, proposed, fifty-four point one five seven three. Questions there before we go into the required language? Questions there before we go into the required language? Okay. All right. So this is where, if there's any hard questions, Blue and Cheryl will speak to them. SB two did make some procedural improvements to adopting a tax rate, but it didn't fix everything. So let me read you this language, and then we'll stop and try to explain it. This budget will raise more total property tax than last year's budget. It'll raise more by $1.53 million. That's 1.61%. Of the $1.53 million, $2.39 million is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the roll this year. Everybody got that? So what that means is, there's reductions on existing side in some places, but you're picking up the value of your new property. And those reductions can come through the various tax freezes and exemptions and things like that. This is one of the notices that didn't quite get fixed. You're going to raise $1.5 million by taking 2.4. All right? You have your 2019, your 2020 certifies, side by side in the table below. Blue, if you want to dance this all the way down that page, we'll stop then and take some more
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. So your tax year 2020 rates, let me go and put these out, because we have to, by SB two now, we are required to make sure we present these to you. So this is us presenting our certified tax rates to you. So our no new revenue tax rate, used to be called your effective tax rate, is 53.5885 cents. The no new revenue maintenance and operations rate is 54.5005 cents. And the voter approval tax rate, which used to be called your rollback tax rate, is 54.5205 Now, looking at your differences between your 2020 certifies and your 2019 certifies, our total taxable value rose from 19.2 billion, from 18.5 billion to 19.2 billion. The protested property values, which we did expect some increase in this, did go up from 110 million to 243 million. The taxable value of your over 65, these are your freezes, or you're disabled with the tax ceilings, decreased slightly from 2.4 billion to 2.3 billion. In your TIF, your tax increment financing, increased in valuations, which that is what you want to see, but it increased from 646 million to 686 million. So that gives you your adjusted taxable value difference between 2019 and 2020, going from 15.6 to 16.4, 16.5 billion. If you apply our projected tax rates, or now our 2019 adopted, excuse me, FY20 adopted tax rate of 55.802 versus your, what we're proposing, a 54.1573. With your estimated levies that Lubbock Central Appraisal District gives us for your over 65s, your caps, that comes out to a total levy in 2019, FY20 of 96 million, versus your 2020, which is your FY21, of 97.8. We always anticipate in this a 99% collection rate to give us a little bit of a buffer, and that's what we set our budget based upon, is a little bit under what the LCAD is going to give us. So we have an anticipated levy in FY20 of 95.3 million, and in FY21 of 96.8 million, 96.9 million. So that gives you your $1.5 million increase in total. But again, as Mr. Atkinson said, some of that is an increase in your new properties of 2.4 million, offset by some decreases in existing property values.
Mr. Atkinson, Mr. Kostlich, one of the, one of our concerns last year when the property tax bill was being considered was that it, I think, I'm going to say unintentionally, I believe it was unintentionally penalized cities who save up and pay cash because of the treatment and the formula. We just went through, we just looked at our, the last slide we looked at before we came to property taxes was our reserves. And we estimate that a year from now, we'll have some $77 million in excess reserves, in many cases being reserved for capital projects that we can pay cash for, which is the direction of this council, which I don't think that's going to change. What are your thoughts about how we, do we save it, save it, save it an adjustment by the legislature? And I'm not asking for an adjustment to 3.5%. I'm just maybe more of an adjustment around the formula itself, where there'd be a hold harmless for that, as an example. How could we, how does that potentially change the way we run our business going forward?
It's not out of the question that the calculations will encourage the issuance of debt. It's really not. We will know by the following year, not the '21, but the '22 year, remember the unused increment discussion that's contained in SB two. That was an attempt, and I think a good one, by the legislature, to not have everybody run to 3.5% each and every year. And what the unused increment means is, of course, this year, we're proposing 2.85, the way this is calculated. We are allowed, if you will, 3.5. So there's 0.65% that if we chose, I'm not saying we will, if we chose, could be added to the 3.5 the following year. So you could go up to 4.15. Now, I think that was good. I like that. And I think even capping how much you can add above your 3.5 is a good idea. My concern is you have three years to use that increment, or it goes away. So the only way, and I'm attempting to answer directly, Mayor, the only way to really save into that is either just take it, take it, take it at 3.5, and take those dollars straight to reserve, or save those increments, and then come in and get it. At least in the
How much did that thought process play into the proposed budget?
Really very little this year. We did model it in, and I think we owe that to y'all and to the public. We run the tax rates out on five-year models. In fact, he's got more than that. He only shows me five years. But we did not make those plans based on that this year. The general fund capital is really where you would be looking for those cash injections, because it's one-time money. And the general fund capital this year is really pretty good. It's light in vehicles, but not much else, so.
Okay, counsel, anything else on page 30 before we move on? Okay, please continue, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, this was a slide we showed last year. I think we kind of like it. So if we take the house on the left, SFR stands for single-family res- potential. We take the house on the left in our current fiscal year, the average taxable value, and these numbers are calculated by LCAD, the average taxable house, 152, 782, 150, almost 153,000. For the new year, the new number is 160,000. So that's the year-over-year change in the average single-family home. So go to the house on the left in the current year's budget. The city taxes against that home were $852.55. The green arrow in the middle calculates the difference between the 152, 782, and the 160. Takes you to the house on the right. That carry over the $852.55, add the growth in appraisal, which would have cost $25.90, back the tax rate down by $25.90. And in doing so, that average home, and the next slide's got it in more detail, but that average home, even with its appraisal growth, will pay the same in city taxes. That comes out to the 1.64 cents for the reduction.
I can't get the math to work on 3.4%, 3.04% on the value piece from 152 to 160. That's wrong, right?
It is.
Okay.
He's going to, we had those adjustments this morning.
Okay. So that'll be, when we adjust it, we're good there?
Yeah.
I'm going to go and flip to the next slide, because that shows that it should be 157.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The math still works out, but it is. It's 157, 422.
Remember that difference between preliminary and certified? We didn't quite get it all sorted out.
Okay. We just need to update that slide. What's the number, 157, what?
422. 157 to 422.
And the next slide's correct, right?
Yes.
Counsel, any questions on this?
We're good?
I know we don't talk about effective rate anymore. That's not in the new bill. But this is, in essence, an effective rate at a household level. All right, let's keep moving.
Okay. Counsel, the next set will be our debt and investments for the proposed budget. Go ahead and turn one more page. This is all fiscal year ended '19, and then its prior year. So if you look at Lubbock, we're a little farther to the right on this chart, you see that year-over-year change. This is general government debt. So this is not the totality. This doesn't have all your enterprises in it. It's general government debt. You see the very slight increase in general government debt year ended '18 and '19. That's after adding the debt for the Public Safety Project. Okay? So it's still going in the right direction. If you go to the following page, it is the same data, but this time it is per capita. This is a common metric of debt. So governmental debt per capita, the green line, of course, is the average, average of this set, comparative set. And you see where Lubbock stands on that. And Mayor, you mentioned Laredo earlier, and of course, you can see it sitting right next to us there. I'm kind of interested in looking at Plano. That's a city that funds a significant quality of life through their general fund, and we're pretty close to them, too. Let's jump one more. Same general government debt. This on a per $100 evaluation. So this is comparing to the property wealth of a community. And you see where we stand over there. And again, you mentioned both Corpus and Laredo, Mayor, and you see them both standing just to the right of us on that. Little above the average on these. The next slide, and stop me at any point, counsel, but the next slide is a new one. So this slide compares the city of Lubbock's debt per capita to the state of Texas's debt per capita. Both sets of data are adjusted for inflation, and we have on there a five-year run for you. And you can see where we topped out at $1,457 per cap back in 2016, and we'll be down to about $1,410 in the current year, FY19. So you can also then see the comparison to the state.
Just doesn't seem to be the message we often hear, you know?
No questions?
Ms. Joy, welcome.
Well, perhaps some brief explanation on why we went from, in 2015 to 2016, what that represents?
It was before me. I believe that may be the tower. I think it's the 60-something million for the tower.
Anything else in that?
Maybe Fire Station 1. Cheryl, you're going to have to help me with this one. I can't see you, but I think you're awake.
Okay, I need to get your, I need to get your microphone on down there.
Yes, sir. Basically, we issued 10 million in October 1 of 2014. We issued another 528 million October 1 of 2015 for the tower.
There's the Citizens Tower.
Any more questions on these comparative slides? We're going to jump into the debt profile of the city next. Okay, Blue's going to take you through the debt profile. Slide 38 is the front page of what we've taken to calling your one-pager, and then the following slide's the back page. So, Blue?
All right, thank you, sir. So the city of Lubbock debt profile, as of today, this year-end, right now on the top, you're going to see your tax-supported debt. And then in the middle, kind of, and to the bottom, you'll have your user fee supported. So what we take out as far as your true tax-supported debt, up at the top is really your general government and your civic centers. That's what we support with tax-funded debt. If you look at FY20, the tax-supported debt in the general fund was 305.8 million. That reduced in FY21, it will reduce to 285 million. So you have a $20 million roll-off in the general fund debt in one year. So that's a 6.6% decrease. The civic centers, a slight roll-off of 457,000. Moving down to your user fee-supported, so these are typically the systems that support themselves, water wastewater being one of the largest, but solid waste reduced from 23.4 to 19.5. So almost a $4 million decrease in one year in solid waste. That is as we are also doing the tax notes for some of the solid waste vehicles. That is as we are also doing the tax notes for some of the solid waste vehicles, so you're adding that on, but we have more roll-off than what we're adding back. The same is true for water and wastewater, you had six hundred and eighty-nine point eight million dollars in debt, so that is by far the, the largest source of our, our debt here in the city of Lubbock, is, is your water and your wastewater system. That is reducing down to six hundred and forty-one million, so a, a forty-eight point seven million-dollar decrease in one year, a seven-point-one percent. Your stormwater, your airport, city bus, cemetery in Lake Allen Henry are all decreasing, so overall, you're getting, you're getting very good reductions in, in your debt there. Internal services, some of the smaller projects that we have out there, but reducing from eighteen point eight to fifteen point nine million, so a two-point-eight, two-point-nine million-dollar reduction in internal services. If you look down at your special revenue funds, your, your gateway, we, we do call that one out, we had ninety-six point six million dollars in FY twenty, that is reducing down to eighty-eight point two million dollars, so an eight-point-four million dollars. And again, that is adding on additional projects and additional debt, but we're having more roll-off than what we're putting on. So your total debt for the city of Lubbock, principal and interest, in FY twenty, of one point, almost one point four billion, has reduced down to one point two eight billion, so one hundred and seven million, one hundred and seven point seven million-dollar reduction from FY twenty to FY twenty-one, seven-point-seven percent reduction.
That's a nice summary there, Mr. Costas. Go back to Gateway for a minute. We're not adding any projects this year, but are we funding projects that we've already approved? Is that what you said we'd be adding some and taking?
In, in the last budget. We added some on.
I know, okay. Got you.
In the current fiscal year, we added two projects.
Got you, okay.
Added in the FY twenty.
In the FY twenty budget.
All right, thank you, okay. Ms. Joy?
How does the water wastewater break down? Just, just for water, what portion of that debt is water-only?
It really is very close to fifty. I would have to get my exact numbers, and I can't use my computer right now, but it's, it's close to fifty-fifty. It's, it's not much off of that, they're, they're pretty equal in, in the debt loads that they carry.
All right, thank you.
And we'll get a deep dive into that when we go through the, yeah. Anything else on thirty-eight? Okay, let's go to thirty-nine, Mr. Costas.
All right, just a little graphical representation of where your, your city of Lubbock debt lies, so on, on the bar chart, you're gonna see water and wastewater, again, carries the, the majority of your debt, followed by your general fund, stormwater, gateway, airport out. So overall, if you look at the, the pie charts, your user fee-supported, so that's outside of your tax base, your, what, what we charge the users for their actual usage constitutes almost seventy-seven percent of our, of our debt here in the city of Lubbock. And again, you see fifty percent of that is water wastewater, followed by twenty-two percent in the general fund. Okay. All right, so continuing forward, our, our next chart is the, the principal debt service. So this debt service is not your total debt, it's what you pay every single year, and we have that broken down into the major categories, water wastewater, general fund, airport, stormwater, gateway, and then we have everything else lumped together in that orange bar at the top. So again, the, the vast majority is gonna go to your water and your wastewater in FY twenty-one, that comes out to a little over about forty-one, forty-two million for the water wastewater system. You have your general fund and every, all your other categories, the, for the city of Lubbock, totals just over ninety, ninety to ninety-one million dollars of debt service for FY twenty-one. Good news in this is, it, it does continue to, to reduce year-over-year, so as we're looking and planning out, we, we do see that to, to start dropping off. That really is shown in the, the next slide, and that's your total debt profile for the city of Lubbock, so you, you have it broken up into your city of Lubbock principal and interest, principal being the blue, green being the interest. And if you follow that down, we have about eighty percent of our total debt right now paying off within ten years. So very, very rapid amortization on that, that's very, very good for our, our city's credit and how we are, we are viewed as financially stable within the investor market.
Okay, I'm gonna jump back in here and we'll talk just a minute about the ratings that you see at the top of the page, and Counsel, I, I know you're well aware of this, but.
This, page forty-two?
You see the city of Lubbock at the top, that's your general fund, that's general obligation, and you have a standard and poor's rating of double A-plus, and then the stable is what they call the outlook. So we have a double A-plus with a stable outlook. We have the same at Fitch. Now, you've not heard Blue or I talk much about Moody's. There is a Moody's rating, it's a prior debt, and as long as that debt is alive, Moody's will maintain that. We do not actively rate with Moody's, so you don't have a new one. But you've got your two double A-pluses, both stable, of course, we all live for the day we bring you a triple A, and we'll, we'll keep working. And then to the right, you have water and wastewater. So this is that new rating, we've mentioned it today. This is to allow the water and wastewater fund to issue revenue debt, it has no tax pledge, it has no tie to the general fund when you issue revenue debt. And so you talk about the debt load of the city, what the state comptroller puts out on their website, what they've got out there is correct, because legally, the general fund guaranteed, they were the co-signer for those notes. Working with this council, working with the priorities of the fiscal discipline, we said, no, that's no longer a teenager, it needs to buy its own car, it needs to stand on its own. So that's what you have there, and you see that in water, and these are only the second ratings these two, these funds have ever had, it's two years old. You got a double A-minus, stable, you have a double A-minus, positive. So very, very proud of Blue and Jay and the team that helps us when we put these rates together, certainly Mayor Pope for sitting with us. We did a virtual pandemic-level re-rate this spring, did this back in April. We held no change on your two general fund ratings, no change on the S and P rating for water and wastewater, and we had an outlook upgrade on Fitch. So the very people who sit and pass judgment on these debts, what would be the credit score of the city, they have bought into the plan that we have, and the council's consistency in allowing us to stay on that plan is already showing results. And not all ratings that were done this year, certainly the ones that were done when we did ours, in fact, Counsel, you probably saw in the national business news, the, the global downgrades that we were supposed to all get, and we did not. So Counsel, that's thanks to y'all's leadership, and to Blue, and to Jay, and to that team for their work on doing that, we're real, real pleased with that. Right below that, on that stacked bar chart, you see the portion of that debt service that is city principal and city interest, that's blue and green, and then the yellow and the pink, that represents LP and L. So if you add them up, that's why it's different from the prior page, you put the LP and L on top of that. Any questions on that? We'll move to the next page.
Please.
So this is general debt service funding, this is where the dollars come from to pay those general debts. If you look at the very top line, the ad valorem tax collections, this is the interest and sinking piece. And so you see the reduction that's coming out across there, the delta to make those payments comes out of the INS sinking fund that we have, then you carry all the way down the page, the various transfers, so the solid waste debt, solid waste used to be in enterprise, we rolled it into the general fund, general fund was already guaranteeing its debt. So that transfer comes across, you see the same for the two TIFs, hotel tax fund, gateway, gateway, of course, is a franchise fee transfer that comes over. There's a small, older piece of LP and L in there, water, stormwater. Mr. Costas brought us that large refunding, the twenty-point-eight million-dollar refunding, you see that as a source, that was a takeout to move that debt back over where it goes. Use of excess reserves, so this is INS piece of that. But all in, what I really like is the total funding sources falling from sixty-four and a half to forty-two and a half. Now, a more accurate comparison would be go back one more year to get past that, that big refunding, and it's still down from fifty-four to forty-two and a half. Questions? Same data now put forth as a chart, shows your major sources. Okay, let's go to the next. So we talked about the issuances that are proposed in your current budget, talk about one hundred and fourteenth slide to Quaker, seven and a half million dollars. We have roughly ninety-five thousand dollars in unspent bonds from prior projects, we need to pull those out and use them for their purpose. New money would be the seven-point-four. We're recommending ten-year financing for several different reasons, but not the least of which is the interest savings of over a million dollars versus doing that on a twenty-year. Okay? You're also working in existing street, and there's a lot of asphalt, and this is really the best way to do it. No tax increase, and the INS tax rate will continue to decrease, this will not cause us to push that INS rate back up. And Blue has the amortization schedule down there for you. We'll jump to investment earnings, I want Blue to explain these to you, he and his team have made some tremendously beneficial changes, and I'll let him talk, and I may jump in on one item, so, Blue?
All right, thank you, sir. So in FY eighteen, we really took a look at our investment earnings, and given the rate environment that we started seeing, we identified that we weren't getting about the, the interest earnings that we should be getting, so we started looking at our portfolio, our allocations, how we were investing, what we were able to invest in, and we, we made some drastic changes, given your permission and, and the permission of the Audit and Investment Committee. That, that allowed us to not take any more risk, we're still investing in everything that the Public Funds Investment Act allow us to invest in, but at the same time, take advantage of some of the, the authorized investments that are yielding a little bit more interest earnings than what you would typically see in treasuries and, and agencies like your, your Freddie, Freddie Max, Farmer Max, Fannie Mays. So we are looking, and I'll, I'll show you the allocation here in a little bit on the next slide, but overall, what I wanna go on, go into on this is the, the investment earnings, the yields that we're, we're, we're getting, we're getting out of this. So the, the top line chart in red shows our Lubbock portfolio. The, the orange and the blue are June, May and June of two thousand twenty, so a couple of months ago, but those two are right on top of each other, tho, those give you the benchmark treasuries at this point. The red is our Lubbock portfolio, and what's, what's significant about this is, even though when you were talking, you know, half a percent to two percent, it doesn't seem like much on the interest earnings, what we're seeing right now is, and what we've done in this portfolio is, a lot of these that we have out to two, three, and five years are non-callable, which means, because interest rates have dropped, where we have invested can't pull them back, give us the money that they owe us at that time, and then we have to find something else to invest in at a lower interest rate. We have locked in these at anywhere upwards of three, four, and sometimes five percent earnings on those investments, so we, we, we took a long, hard look at that, that's something we thought of, of value. At this time, you're gonna see on the bottom chart, our, our interest earnings are decreasing in FY twenty, and, and we, we do gain a little bit back in FY twenty-one, but what you, what I wanna point out in this is FY twenty, we are looking, we have seven-point-three million dollars right now, that's far less than the fourteen-point-four we saw last year in FY nineteen, we expect another about one-point-four million to come in if nothing else really changes significantly. But we're getting this about eight-point-seven million dollars at a time when our treasury, our, our benchmark for the entire year is gonna be about point nine percent. If you look back to about FY eighteen, when we were getting about the same, eight-point-three million, when we started this, change in our, our investment strategy, we got eight-point-three million dollars when the treasury benchmark was, was up over two-point-one percent. So you're looking at a significant reduction in our benchmark, yet significant increase in our, in our earnings. So the, the strategy that we have is working, it's, it's slow, it's grinding at this point because the, the rate, interest rate environment is so low, but we're, we're still looking, we're still finding value, and the way that we're investing and yet holding cash i- is, is playing out and it is working. Mayor, I'll stop there, and if anybody has any questions on that, I'll be happy to take those.
Yeah, it's a, you know, we, we're charged with being good stewards, and we've talked about this before, but this is a, you know, a great example. If you look at sort of between seventeen and eighteen, so somewhere in there, excuse me, somewhere between sixteen and seventeen, that, that we had a similar kind of rate environment to what we have, have today, and we were earning certainly less than four-point-eight, probably more like, probably split the difference there, maybe three, three-point-six. And even going back to that rate today, that kind of environment today, we're at, what, eight and a half, eight-point-seven million, I mean, something near, near, at least two times, more like two and a half times.
Yes.
That gives us flexibility, that money comes right back in to.
It does.
To the, to, to our funds for us to use.
Yes, that, that's coming back, this is all operating too.
Right.
This is not our bond funds that we do invest separately, so this is all operating, so we, we essentially get, you know, eight-point-seven million dollars back that we didn't have to take out of a taxpayer's pocket.
That helps take care of streets, and helps mow parks, and helps build playgrounds, and running tracks, and those kind of things. I know it's real inside-baseballish, but it's really, really good stuff, that's why an organization this size needs a chief financial officer. Portfolio?
All right, thank you, and this is our, our current investment portfolio and the way we have allocated. So on the left-hand side, you'll see what we have invested in, so treasuries, investment pools, those are your, your daily overnight investment pools that we, we often call local government investment pools. You have your agencies, so your Farmer Max, Farmer, Farm Credits, Federal Home Loans, Freddie Max, and Fannie Mays. We, we haven't invested too much in those lately because of the interest rate environments, but then you have your municipal bonds, so much like we issue bonds, other municipalities, universities, taxing districts issue bonds as well, and we will invest in those. There is commercial paper, money market funds, and we do hold some cash, so the, the next two columns are gonna see kind of our policy range that we have in our, in our investment strategy, and really where that target is in, in that strategy. Now, this is a, this is a broad overarching target, this is a long-term target. Now, you have to, you have to balance that with your investment strategy for that time. So right now, when we are seeing incredibly low interest rates within your, your agencies and treasuries, and even now getting into your investment pools, we're gonna reallocate, we're gonna shift some of that portfolio allocation into some of the, the safe haven investments where we can get a little bit more yield, better bang for our buck on that. So you're gonna see that our, our treasuries, investment pools, and agencies, all yielding incredibly low at this point, are very underweight to our, to our overall long-term strategy, that, that's very tactical at this point, and we do have a, a significant overweight in municipal bonds and, and commercial paper. I, I wanna mention that when we, when we invest in these, you know, the, the agencies have a, a specific rating that's very, very high rating, double A-plus to triple A. The, the investment pools are triple A-rated. The municipal bonds. The municipal bonds, we have a minimum of an A rating that we can invest in. So still very high-quality, investment-grade products that we're investing in. We also have rules and restrictions on how much we can invest in each municipal bond. So I can't go out and buy $20 to $30 million of one bond. We're limited at 5 million. We keep it to about $2 million per bond on those investments. We want that because we want diversification. We don't want to have all of our eggs in one basket in one bond. So if something does happen and there is a bankruptcy filed, we are not at higher risk in that investment. Same way with commercial paper. Commercial paper, we have even a further restriction. These credit rating agencies will give different ratings. So when you're used to seeing your AA, AA, and AAA ratings, on the short-term side, there's an A1, A1+, A1+ is the highest rating, A1, and then you'll get into your A2s. We can only do the A1 and A1+ rating. So it's even higher than the highest investment grade.
Okay, counsel, any questions on the investment portfolio? Okay, I think this would be a good place to take a quick break. Let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back and get inside general fund capital for '20 and '21. Okay? So let's try to come back, counsel, at 5:35. Okay, it's 5:45. Lubbock City Council will come back to order. We'll resume on page 48, I believe. Mr. Atkinson? Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and flip to the next page, page 49. And we'll start through the General Fund's Proposed Capital Program. If you have your Volume 1 book with you, the first project is actually on page 194 of that book. So on this page, two items to note. We have one project that we did not expend the dollars. It was one of the frozen projects. We're going to ask to close and release those dollars, and we'll pick that one back up. Really more tied when we get to the Potential Transfer Station and Alternate Service Center. That's 8645 Municipal Hill Future Planning. Come down to 92359 Facility Roof Replacement. This is a standing capital project that we maintain. This is under Mr. Everett's department. Cumulatively, it's had about $1.2 million over the last few years put in it. About 1.15 have been spent. We are asking to add $106,000 to that. We are funding that $106,000 by closing the Municipal Hill Planning Project and then adding $6,000 to it. So that'll bring us square on that one. Questions on that project? If not, let's turn the page. So we're on page 50. And the first project you see for funding is 8550 Golf Course Improvements. And counsel will remind you, while this is in the general fund, it is not paid out of general fund revenues. So this is where our contractor that runs Meadowbrook, they have a set-aside capital fund required by lease. They pay us golf course revenue that also goes in to a capital fund, and that's how those projects go forward.
And we would find this where in the operating, in the big book?
Be on page 209. Remove my stuff, and I'll do that better. So the flow of these projects, if the council approves and appropriates the dollars, Arcus brings in a scope of work that has to be approved by staff before the dollars can be released to move forward.
I'll see it on 20, maybe, I'm looking at, oh, I'm looking at 2, on the electronic. I got it. I just saw that. Okay, I can figure it out now.
When the page is offset?
Yeah, about six pages off. Okay, got it. Thank you. It's 215 in the electronic version.
Okay, the next, 8630 Park Amenities. Counsel will recall, we brought this forward about three years ago. This is also an annual appropriation that we request, and the park amenities gives us the ability to pre-purchase and stock. Those common things, as simple as trash cans, park benches, small tables with covers. And we've been able to use those really all across town. That's page 211 in your book, so I believe somewhere around 217 on the electronic. So this is a little down from what we funded in the prior years, but nonetheless, it's allowing us to keep that project going. These are done both proactively by your Parks Operations Group and then secondarily on request. Sometimes we get one particular park. The Trail Above Ozlon is a good example. There was an area that people would stop, and they wanted to sit, and there were no benches. This gave us the ability to come forward and put those in. Source of the dollars on this project? $3,000 in unspent bonds, so cleaning out the couch cushions, and then $122,000 in new cash.
But no walking trail that's down, that's down, no new track, walking tracks this year. Is that right?
That is correct. That is correct.
It's in a different, it's in a different line item, but still not funding any of those this year.
So the next project, still inside Culture and Recreation, is 92567. That is dock and bridge replacement. Second, I'll get you the page number.
220? 220 or 226, depending on how you're looking at it.
So this project is really the outshoot of a 2018 inventory project that was done. This is where they went in, and the park staff identified mainly existing ones that needed some level of help. We've also used it to replace one dock where somebody thought a campfire out on the dock would be a good idea. It's not, especially when the dock is made of plastic. But we did do that. We've also been able to support other projects, like the Lake Three Project, and put the kayak launches in with these. The $100,000 that's requested will all be new cash. The next one we will go to is the Parks Master Plan. Blue, you already found that one?
237.
237. So counsel, this is an expensive request. We'll talk about it a little bit in detail. And I believe Councilwoman Patterson-Harris may be able to jump in and help me. We have several needed pending park projects that are out in front of us today that are eligible for one of two categories of funding that's made available by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. One of those is what's called a Grants and Aid. That's your traditional big project funding that Parks and Wildlife will do. That's where dollars were sought for the Tom Martin Complex, for the complex that is at McAllister Park, and several others. The second is what's called the Recreational Trail Grant Program. And recreational trail grant is a fascinating program that is maybe the only Parks and Wildlife grant that each year is funded, and they don't spend all the dollars. So the availability is much higher in that program. We have, I think, a perfect project for that. We talked a little bit about the head-in part of it last year, and that is connecting for pedestrian and for bicycle all of the canyon lakes. All the canyon lakes. That fits the Rec Trail Grant Program to a T. And in fact, Councilwoman and myself have been to Austin and met with leadership of Parks and Wildlife in concept. We have laid that out, and we've laid out some options for the May Simmons area. And really, truly, we have the potential over time to build one of the larger linear trail systems in the state of Texas. Counsel is aware, we own property that leaves the city kind of to the east-southeast that goes miles and can be developed and fits Rec Trail Grant. Now, the caveat to all of this is to be eligible for Parks and Wildlife consideration for any of the grant programs, you have to have an approved Parks Master Plan. And those are very prescriptive. Actually, the prescription for them is very good. It requires a lot of public input, what if this, what if that? Long story short, the last time the city did that was in 2010, and they are required to have a five-year update sequence or they become invalid. So ours is invalid. We don't have one today. We are asking for the funding to do one. And then you've got that first five years. Number one, it's a better picture of the parks than what the public wants. But number two, it is funding eligibility for us. So that's what's in front of you on that one, and we'd be pleased to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Questions on the Culture and Recreation Services, general fund capital program for '20 or '21? '20 and '21? All right, let's go to page 51, Mr. Atkinson.
You'll see two projects on this page. The first is the ongoing project for major repairs at fire facilities. So this is your 19-stations administration, the various other buildings. Fire does a great job of taking care of and keeping up with those stations. And I truly believe if we do not continue to do that, if we let this one get behind, it will cost us more than the $300,000 a year to get caught back up with it. Funding sources, as you see on the page, 246 in new cash and $54,000 in existing unspent bonds.
It's on page 243, I believe.
That is correct. So the final project in public health and safety, 2019254 Outdoor Warning Siren System. This is on page 248 in the book, so I believe 254 if you're on the electronic. Requested funding is $980,436. This is the capital funding. So just a couple of comments on that. This will get the entire system installed. It is an outdoor warning system. Sometimes we call them tornado sirens. Sometimes we think they do things other than that. They're a powerful tool, and they can be used for a lot of different reasons. Over the course of my career, they've been used in tornadoes. They've been used in severe thunderstorms. They've been used in hazardous material leaks and explosions. So they will be a powerful tool for us. But yet, in all of those cases, they are outdoor warning. Unless you're very close to the installs, you will not hear them inside. That is how they're designed today. And I think it's important for the public to understand and have that expectation as we go forward. So the first, excuse me, the first-year request again is 980,436. There is a second-year request. You see that programmed in under 21, 22. That's 150, and that is for the truck that I mentioned when we first started talking today. We have used a, again, what I think is the industry leader in these systems is who has prepared our quote and our estimate to provide the coverage. The undeveloped portions of the city will not have these installs when it starts. They will be added as they develop. So the 39 installs covers the developed portion of the city.
Two quick questions. One, the capital project numbers don't match from, just for whatever it's worth. One's 2019, 254, and in our book, it's 2020, 089, I believe.
The 2020, 089 should be the correct one, and that's not what's in the presentation. So we'll fix that.
Okay. And then, okay, so it shows on, it shows in the book that you think it'll be $150,021, 22 for the additional capital you need?
For the truck, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And do recall, not in the capital budget, but in the operating budget, is the requested addition of the technician for the system.
Okay. Further questions or comments on page 54, Public Safety and Health, General Fund Capital? Mr. Chides?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief question on the warning system. Will that be working in conjunction with Alert, LBK, as well? Or have that been thought out?
They would be used together. They are not connected systems.
Okay, but they will be, both be functioning?
Yeah, so LBK Alert, yes, they will go together. LBK Alert can be used in a lot of situations, though, that will not merit setting these off.
Yes. Just trying to clarify. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Joy?
I guess my question is, what do you consider an undeveloped area?
Well, if you take the totality of the city, we have large areas that, the circle of that siren, there's nobody in it to notify.
Okay, so that's how you determine the coverage? Okay.
Okay, please go to the next page.
Okay, on the next page, we'll start with project 8647. That can be found on page 259 in your book. So 265 on the electronics. This is some additional work or some additional funding associated with Loop 88. This one is proposed to be funded with new cash. And again, this will be right away in utility adjustments, is what you'll see here.
Okay. Let's go down to 92516.
Thank you. This is the Dirt Road Residential Program. Again, brought forward at $800,000. It's on page 271 of the printed book. It's 277 on the other. Counsel, at your place, you do have 211 by 17 maps. This project, of course, says unimproved roads on it. And if we're continuing to work on the eye test for the audience, it's up on the screen. Give you all a minute to look at that. You're looking at the red bars in these.
Mr. Griffith? Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Atkinson?
Mr. Atkinson, on the red bars...
Was this on the unpaved roads sheet?
Yes. Unpaved road sheet. It's on your screens. The ones located south of I-27 and Loop 289. I think those are running north-south, not east-west. I hope, because those are already paved streets.
We should not do that again. You are, you are correct. Those are the numbered streets. Mike or Wood, can you help me?
Hit the, hit the button there, if you would, please.
So those are supposed to be between Ash and Cedar. So those are unpaved. The lines, if they're not in the correct place, they are a little further east. But those would be the ones, I think it's 76th and 78th between Ash and Cedar. I don't know if I got those numbers exactly right, but those, those are unpaved streets in that, in that area. So if that's depicted incorrectly, then we apologize for that. But those are, those are the streets that are intended to be.
It may not be. I'm just saying, I thought the ones that were, and that may be the point, that the ones north-south are under construction.
I don't, I don't believe so. Yeah, because the ones, that whole neighborhood is unpaved, all the, pretty much all the east-west and north-south.
All the north-south.
The neighborhood that we're targeting is the one that's just west of MLK. And so, again, between Ash and Cedar. And so these lines, obviously, at this scale, I can't tell if they're in the right spot. But those are the ones that we're targeting, between Ash and Cedar on those east-west streets.
We'd get a clarification between tonight and tomorrow night on that, too?
Yes, sir. They're definitely the east-west streets that we targeted.
We'll make a blow-up. We'll, we'll provide a more detailed map.
Thank you.
While you're, Mr. Kenyon, while you're here, let's go to, let's go to the, the other sheet. This may require Mr. Franklin. He's sort of hiding, hiding behind a chair back there. But we talked the other night at our council meeting about brick streets. And I don't see any street maintenance projects for brick streets. I know we've done some in-house or some, you know, on a matter of course, but this would imply that we're not planning on working on any of our, our brick streets. Is that right?
So if I could start on that, Mayor?
Please.
The, the blue star that's up there? That, that is the canyon at 13 in Texas. So we are proposing to come through, and the actual capital to do the study and so forth will come through Stormwater. That is where there are, I believe, I was told, seven storm sewer inlets within a half a block of where that, that big dip is. We are coming forward to get all of that designed, figured out, and then the following year, fix it. But to go to the remainder of your question, yes, there will continue to be maintenance out of the operating money, but not a major project on the brick streets.
Thank you. I think getting started, that's the biggest, I would say that's the biggest problem we have today on, on our brick streets. It's one we need to address, so. All right, further questions for Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just want to touch on this, and I know we're going to be doing some delving as the days continue to greet us here. Is that from Idlewood Road to East Broadway?
That, that is a rebuild of that section of MLK. We're talking about the street maintenance money, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a contractor rebuild, MLK from East 19th up to Broadway.
Does it catch on to where they just finished rebuild up to 31st and take it further north?
Yes. There are two contractor rebuild streets that you'll see on that map. And the one is the stretch of MLK that we've just mentioned. And the other is actually West 50th. And I think certain, certain of those of us that are on the MPO are aware that the county intends to work on 50th, continuing west.
And then in-house, we're going to do what looks to me to be 24th Street between, what's that, between Memphis and, is that?
Indiana.
Correct. It's Memphis, Indiana. It's that medical district, medical district. We're going to kind of started, try to start that this year, and we're going to continue that.
Yeah, because here's a couple of places on that little stretch you could lose a car right now.
Correct.
Small car. So we'll get some work this year, then we'll rebuild it next year, is what you're saying?
Pending the funds available. It was planned to do the, the medical district this year, but our micro-sourcing bids came in higher than expected. So if whatever funds is left, we're going to start this year, and then we're going to continue with it through next year as well.
We, we, that needs to happen this year. We've promised people that was going to happen. The, the guy sitting to my right and I have people that, seriously, we hear from on a weekly basis wanting to know when the trucks are going to be there. I mean, that, that's, we got to get it done. And I don't know why it would be at the bottom of the list, but those, we have lots of traffic. We had, we had an arrest made recently when, when somebody hit a bump at 21st and Juliet and disabled their car. Allowed the sheriff's deputies to, to corral a bad guy. It's a true story. It's how bad, it's how bad the holes are over there. Yeah, there was a positive. That's a good takeaway.
Mr., Mr. Griffith? Thank you, Mayor. So, but some of that is starting this summer in the medical district, correct?
Yes, sir. We, whatever we can spend that we have in our funds this year, we will spend in, in the medical district.
Okay. I wasn't aware. Do we have, Mr. Franklin, a, a dollar amount at all that we're?
I, I don't have that with me at this time, but I can easily get that for you.
Let's get that for tomorrow, because that's, if that's not going to get done this year, that needs to be on this map for next year. And something on next year needs to be bumped to the year after that. We can't make promises to citizens that we're going to do something, business owners, and not do it. And these people have waited patiently, and it's horrible.
Also, the gold shaded area on concrete patching, we're already underway between 34th and 50th, University to Indiana.
We're doing the asphalt patching in that area and some concrete patching in that area, yes, sir. This will, this will finish that area.
So we are doing some concrete patching there as well?
Yes, ma'am. The asphalt patching's going on right now.
Yeah, I've seen that. I was just curious as to, so we will be doing some concrete?
And then the concrete patching, yes, ma'am. The concrete patching's where we come and we do all the valley gutters in that area?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Correct.
And, and I'm, turn me on, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
I'm over here doing all this talking, and they come here and turn me on.
Where I sit, you don't need a microphone.
And, and, and I know, man, the, the, the deal about streets, we could sit here all day and, and, and council members could probably put on boxing gloves, man, and we can duke this thing out because there are issues all throughout the city that need to be addressed. And I, I, I think that I'm just going to sit this right here and we do what we will with it. And I appreciate the amount of funds, but we've got to find a way to add, continue to add every time to it and do some streets, because having said anything, I thought we, I'd wait till the delving. But it, a little further to the eastern portion, there are streets that aren't on here, and you'll not see them on the maintenance, like rejuvenating, all that type of stuff, because they're so horrible, so old, that they need to be replaced. And I would that, and I appreciate the, the one from this last year, and then it's costly and, and what we have here. But there are so many collector's streets and all of that, that if we could get to those and, and do well with those for citizens, it'd make it a whole lot, lot, lot easier for, for citizens to commute throughout the city. Because I haven't even dropped the name Avenue 8, which is a booger bear in itself. And, and, but I just, I just want us to push and, and, and understand this year where we are with everything, but it, it is, it is not okay. And, and I'm going to kind of take the, the mayor's words, say, when you've taught the citizens, tell them, say, man, we're going to look to get that, we're going to look to work that thing out. And it continues day, year after year, to continue to be an issue for folks, it's not okay. It, it's not okay. How we do that, I don't know. But I say we figure it out and get it done, man, because there are citizens suffering all over this city, bumpity bump and, and, and taking roller coaster rides when they don't even know it, and it's not okay. And so, I do, I, I, I get really bothered when we start talking streets. I know we've got different pots of money that we use for different things, whether Gateway funds we use for this, that. I don't know. I think that's a conversation that we continue to have, to see how we actually, do we do that differently, so that we're able to, to address some of these concerns. But it's a huge issue for so many citizens. And if we could help them be able to travel through this city without those major issues, I, I think some of the other stuff could even be put out, they'd even let you put some of that on the back burner. But those are things that a lot of the citizens throughout the city suffer equally on. But I think that they're the big, big parts that we can fix and, and do something about those things. We can really add some, some ease to some folks' lives.
Mr. Griffith? Okay, I'm, I'm still concerned about medical district. If, if the doll, if the dollars we don't have are not there, I mean, we're, we're short because of high contracts, why is it not pulled into this year?
If, if you don't mind, let us bring you, the fact that that didn't make the cut this year has just recently been brought to my attention.
Okay.
And it's been put back, and we're looking for solutions, and we'd be glad to bring those back to you. If we don't have them tomorrow, we will on Wednesday.
Okay, so, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that if we can get a, get the overlay map of what has been done or is currently being done this year?
Yes.
So that we can mesh the two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson, let's touch on 92570 and then down to 92669, please.
A second.
Same page, just down, just.
So 92570 is also a project we've attempted to make annual. This is where we come in and either fix an existing ADA ramp, add one where it's needed. That may be in association with another project that we have ongoing. Although we always hold back just a little of those dollars, so that if we have an area that's not on our radar, but we have an individual that's directly impacted, we can come in and take care of that. So that's what those funds are for.
Okay.
And you'll notice while I'm only asking for the 150 this year, we're still holding about 225 of that. So I think that's sufficient to get us through the next year.
So let's go, while you're talking, in that same, go back up to 92435 for a minute. Take us through that. That shows 11 million, nearly 12 million that'll be... That shows 12 million that'll be, we still have as of...
That's your current year money plus the pieces that have fallen out from the prior years, is what that is.
And the reason it looks like this is because so much of that activity takes care, takes place in the, our fourth, the fourth quarter of our fiscal year.
That, that is correct. Street, street maintenance doesn't match the budget.
Our calendar year, excuse me, fiscal year, yes, okay.
Correct. Doesn't match the budget year.
But that would actually give us a little bit, we have more than what we actually planned on having for this year, unless we're two years behind with projects.
The, the difference is just where, where the calendar cuts off on the prior year contracts. We, we don't unobligate that money. It keeps going into the next project.
Okay, let's move down to 92669, please.
So this will be on page 287 in the book. It's 293 on the electronic. Council will recall, we moved some money this year to begin the engineering and the design of this project. We have also recently completed the rehabilitation portion of the project on 114th back to the east. So as you approach, if you're driving on 114th heading west, as you approach Quaker, you now no longer have those large islands of dirt that has been filled in with a roadway. These are the dollars to let us come in and jump over Quaker and work between Quaker and Slide. And again, the, the engineering, the design portion of it is currently funded. So this is all construction money. This is what we're proposing for that 10-year issuance. A good question would be, why is this not in Gateway? And it's because Gateway does not have the carrying capacity.
Okay, and then the, we've already, I think we've had sufficient discussion around the very bottom one, 2020062. That's what we were just talking about, street maintenance. Okay, council, open the floor for further questions on items, streets, streets, projects for 2020, 2021 general fund.
Mayor, if you, if you would like, we can probably go ahead and carry over to the next page. There are two more street projects listed.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
They're, they're small ones, but we think they're good ones.
No, we need to talk about them. So let's go down then to 2020080.
So this is on page 301. This will be kind of a two-pronged effort to come in and work on the currently angled parking and turn that into the parallel parking. We'll, we'll catch as much of that in-house as we can. Think you've seen the success we've had around this building. And then we'll use contractors as well, so that we can get through that and get through it quickly.
Okay, and 2020082?
So 082, and I neglected to mention on 080, but they're both related. If you'll recall, one, one key feature that is in your new downtown master plan is the conversion of angle to parallel. And most importantly, it's one-way back to two-way. It's kind of a back-to-the-future type model. So you'll see that this is requested on 082, $400,000 this year, $400,000 next year. So I believe the $400,000 that we've asked for this year will take K and L for their total lengths. So this includes all the lights that need to be done on 19th. It will take K and L and convert them to two-way traffic.
It looks like maybe M from 10th Street to Broadway?
The, the piece that can be done without lights, yes.
Just that one little two-block, two-block stretch. Okay, we talked about that just at a recent council meeting.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Any, any questions or comments around park, excuse me, traffic and streets in the general fund, proposed general fund capital program for next year? Ms. Joy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Let's talk about 114th Street. So let, let's talk about what, what you're doing to 104th Street, 114th Street, excuse me.
Good. We're going to ask Mike Keenum to come back up, and we'll talk about how to take that big intersection, at least the Quaker side of the intersection, and turn it into a roadway out to Slide.
So, Mr. Atkinson is correct. The, the intent is to do full width. The master thoroughfare plan that had been approved a couple of years ago calls that to be a five-lane road. So it'll be five-lane paved all the way from Quaker to Slide. The intersections would be widened out to seven lanes there at Quaker that's already there. So you have the big node and then the smaller link, but the five lanes. And then in front of the HEB would be a turn lane. And so optimizing the current width that's there, but then there's a drainage channel as you go further to the west that is accounted for as well, because there's a lot of water that's coming through that area. So all that's being accounted for in the design right now that is ongoing.
And what do we have right now?
Right now, we've got two lanes.
And so, those two lanes, was that a city project to put in those?
I believe that those two lanes probably were city. I don't know if those were county road when we annexed it way back, or if that was something that we paved a long time ago, but it's been that way for quite a while.
And so that five-lane road is having to be built at cost, the cost to the city?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Nobody's helping with it?
Nobody's helping with it.
Did we ask anybody to help?
We will.
I think we should.
But during the impact fee conversation carries into that going forward in the future, it doesn't help us immediately for that.
Right, that's what I wanna know, is will we be able to go back into the impact fee, perhaps, to assist with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any idea, well, no, you don't, because you don't know what the, you know what it's gonna be, okay, well, good.
You can't go back retroactively, something's already been built.
Right, no, we would be looking for basically developer-type agreements, some participation, but if, if you drive through there today, there are some new strip retail on the north side of One Hundred and Fourteenth. That curb and gutter is sitting out there in the dirt, and we're doing everything we can not to do again what was done across Quaker where the Walmart is, where that curb and gutter sat out there all by itself.
Well, just know, we'll be watching, okay? Because we need some help. We've told developers we can't afford to build these streets by ourselves, and these thoroughfares by ourselves, and we need to stick with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Mashinio?
Well, thanks, Mayor, I was just gonna brag on Mr. Keenum and his crew, that there's a, there's a new stretch of One Hundred and Fourteenth, if you haven't been out there, from Quaker back to Norfolk, that they've really done a good job with, really nice.
Okay, you two have anything else to do some serious studying over here? You got anything to add? Ms. Patterson Harris?
Probably just gonna, I have a listing of those unpaved roads, and then, what I have is a little bit different from what was showing on, on the sheet here, but we can, we'll, we'll sit and see.
Yeah, we were still trying to get as much as we could get as late as Friday.
Okay.
So, you're gonna have, I think, at least one down south of the loop that has changed, but we've also made the add on the MLK stretch, so we, we treat them as two different pots, but we try to get as much out of each as we can.
I got you, and I do, I appreciate that, you know, I, I don't fuss about much. Everybody's trying to look at me now, so, fuss about anything. But I, but I do, I appreciate that, so, as we continue the conversation.
Well, and we completely agree with and support the concept that we need more. We doubled it in a year, and it's not half enough, we know that.
Okay, let's move to page fifty-six, it's the, I think it's the final page of general fund capital, if I'm not...
Yes, sir, it is, and the project is twenty-twenty, zero-sixty-four. You'll find that on page two-ninety-nine in the book, or three-oh-five on the, on the electronic. And this is continuing the work on the transfer station. The first large run of the study has been completed, it needs some adjustment, but it more appropriately needs to start digging into the where, to evaluating the sites. And so, I know the council's aware, but for those that are listening, today, every trash truck in Lubbock, regardless of which dumpster it empties, gets on the highway and drives to Abernathy, it goes west of Abernathy, it dumps its load, it comes back down the interstate, picks back up where it left off. Some of those are thirty-plus mile trips each way. The city is growing, we cannot continue to keep driving those trash trucks in that fashion. Solution is a transfer station, it is an enclosed facility, where trash trucks within a certain radius, rather than going back out to the landfill, going back to Abernathy, they will come to that facility, they go inside, the truck is unloaded inside, loader pushes it into a big machine, the other end of the machine is a semi-trailer, and the trash is then compacted into that semi-trailer, it will carry, obviously, much more than one trash truck's worth, we get it loaded, the semi, an over-the-road machine, now goes over the road, and the trash truck is back on its route much quicker. So we just need to keep taking those positive steps towards that project, and not included in these requested dollars, but just counsel to keep on the table, at the point we find that suitable location, we also want to evaluate the possibility that that also becomes what today we do at municipal health. So, your heavy equipment has one base, one place that it comes in and gets fueled and serviced and loaded, and I think that's too far, if we spend too much road time with that big heavy equipment, and this will give us an opportunity to at least consider having that second service center location. And I think that will complete your proposed capital program, that actually gets us through the end of session one. Got some comebacks that we need to bring to you tomorrow, and we're gonna work on some mapping.
Let's go through those real quick, would, would, you have your list, sir?
We're gonna work on some mapping, we're gonna bring some answers as it relates to what's going on in the Medical District. And it's street maintenance in and around the rebuild street, the rebuild street's not in the current budget, but the maintenance around it is, so we need to work on that. Council, any others that you can recall?
Blue, do you think you could easily depict the investments that we have on our, our bond funds, our, you know, I mean, we invest those too, it's not, it's pretty, I know it's a, it's a pretty vanilla kind of deal, but I think it'd be nice to at least, could you show that? You have a slide that could, where you could show that? Or there may be one, did we miss it somewhere?
We did.
Ms. Joy and I were talking about it at the break. So just up on the very top part, is that, is that what you're talking about, where it says restricted?
That's, that's the bond funds, and we only keep the bond funds in the investment pools, we don't, we don't put those out into any other investment types.
So is that all that's up there?
Yes.
There's none of our other funds are all somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks. So it's, it's forty, nearly forty percent of our total, of the total funds that we have, okay. So, so, Blue, go through what, just take an example, those bond funds, that's, that's any bonds that we sold, have sold upfront, that we're gonna owe, we're gonna owe payments, a stream of payments on in the future, right?
That, that's correct, so what we do on this is, as soon as we get the, the funding, let me take even a step further back, when we approve a budget, you always know, in that, that first council session in October, we pass what's called a reimbursement resolution. That reimbursement resolution allows us to go ahead and start spending our cash that we have in reserves on those projects, to get them moving forward. Then, later on in the year, in the fiscal year, when we actually issue the debt for those projects, because we have that reimbursement resolution, those funds go into these investment pools, that's where the, the funds are deposited, and then we will immediately draw down what we had spent out of our operating cash, to replenish our operating cash. Then, as the project is going, the, the funds that we receive for those projects, held in these investment pools, are drawn down as we spend the, the funds on those. So, if you have a project out there that's ten million dollars, you get the ten million dollars, we put it in the investment pool. If we had already spent five million of that in our cash, we immediately pull that five million out, you're left with five million in that bond fund, in those bond fund investment pools. Then, as the project is going, say, the next month, they spend two million dollars, we will go through and reconcile that, and we will pull down two million dollars of those funds to pay out to the contractors that, that performed the work.
The question goes to, we're showing a total of current holdings, but out of that, thirty-seven-point-one percent are monies where we sold bonds, that we're going to pay somebody eventually.
Yes, these are the project funds, so to pay for those capital projects that we have outstanding.
So when we're talking, when you say, operating funds, that sort of thing, then we're talking about the difference between six-twelve and two-twenty-seven, basically?
Yes, ma'am, that's what it is.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything further for questions and answers, you good, Ms., down, down there, Steve, Sheila, you good? May Pretend, you good? You got your question answered? Randy, Juan, any question, anything, okay. Okay, we're gonna move to part two, council, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're ahead of schedule a little bit, but we're gonna move and, and just, we're not gonna go, don't let this thing scare you, we're not gonna go that far, we're gonna get through the, we're gonna run through the, we're gonna get through the fee changes, okay? Okay, so, I don't believe we got this one, I don't believe we saw this electronically, so we're gonna have to go with what you have, is that right? We'll just do it on the screen, okay? Did we get, I thought we just got one, did we get two? Yeah, I thought we just got... Are they? No, mine, mine ends it. Right, we've got the books, but not the presentation, that's okay. Okay, great, we'll get it here momentarily, okay. Why don't you get started then on, on operating budget and capital program, Mr. Atkinson? Turn you on?
Back on, please. Thank you, sir. Go ahead and skip over to page three. This will look very familiar, you saw this in part one. These are your general fund revenues, these are, these are put up as a reminder. Go to page two, or page four, my apologies. So the summary highlights, I think are important. Again, the, the general fund's revenue is going up by six-hundred-and-six thousand dollars, and that's a lot of money, there's no question. That is three-tenths of one percent of the general fund. And I think, put in that frame, that's pretty darn flat, that is pretty flat. Reminder, the property tax increase, that is coming off of the new property, and that's the only way we can bring you the proposal that holds that average, single-family home flat year over year. Sales tax, again, we're gonna use the new twenty-twenty numbers, the twenty-twenty numbers based on what's actually happened through the pandemic, and our projected increase is two-and-a-half percent. You do see the solid waste revenue up, but that's because the customer base goes up, it's not because we're changing the rate, with the exception of those tipping fees. And again, you don't pay the tipping fee if you're not running across the scales at the landfill. And a final reminder, we do not propose to use the excess reserves in the general fund in this budget, we ask that you allow us to hold those. And why, again, we don't know the duration of the pandemic, and we don't know what economic changes are truly gonna come out. So, that's a quick summary again, or quick reminder on revenue. The next page is a pie chart, this is not the same one that we've seen before, this one is unique to the general fund. So, just as I pointed out earlier today, property tax is a big deal, we know that, it's not the biggest revenue source, it's sales tax, it's sales tax. You see, then, you fall off of that, you get into franchise fees, fees for service, and some lesser components of the revenue. So if asked of the general fund, where do your dollars come from, this is your answer. Questions on the revenues before we get into the actual fee changes? Okay, hearing none, let's turn the page, so we're on page six. If y'all would kind of work your way through that page, and I'm gonna treat them a bit as a group, so the first block that you have on page six and continuing to page seven, these are various fees for unique items that the city secretary and her team are responsible for doing. So the first one, you see the coin-operated machine permits and the switching of local agent, and I think Ms. Garz has done a great job working on this over the last year and educating all of us to it. The request is to take that from twenty-five to fifty dollars.
Becky, can you spend a minute, just give everybody just a little bit more background on what that exactly, that means exactly, please, and why it's important, particularly the, the local agent transfer?
Right, prior to this, we didn't have this fee, and we had it last year for twenty-five dollars, but prior to that, we just had ongoing where they would change local agents throughout the year, so we were touching the same business over and over, and it, it requires a lot of staff time, and it's actually costing us money, so that is, that is why the, anytime they change a local agent, we're gonna charge them a fee. It was, it was just every time, they just had a lot of local agents, because they bring in people that are just, I'll just have to say, they're using their name, and they're not really working it, and then that person goes away, and they bring someone else.
Thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
Keep, keep running down that page, and Ms. Garz, please jump in. Several of these, your license permits for the ambulances, you see the transfer ambulances, you see the emergency ambulances, inspection fees, many of those have not been adjusted in quite a lengthy period of time. Get down to transportation company permit fee, that fee is proposed to go away. Underneath it, you get into a couple of three tow truck permits, and again, these also have been out there a long time and have not kept up with what it costs us to do that, although she is proposing to remove the substitute vehicle permit fee. Last two on this page, one of those is a noise permit late fee, and the second, of course, is related, and that's the repetitive days and the late fee that goes with that. Questions on six? The, the same topics are gonna continue on the top of seven, Mayor, if you want me to keep going.
Let's go to the next page, please, sir, yes.
Okay. So on the top of seven, you see the right-of-way permits, this is use of our right-of-way for parades, circuses, loudspeakers, et cetera, one is a late fee, one is a noise fee, both of those are being adjusted. Requesting a new fee to permit a block party greater than one hundred participants?
Let's talk about that for a minute. Where's the, what's a good situation, give me an example of something like that?
Usually, your, your permit fees for a right-of-way for block parties, you have your neighborhood events that are very small, and you don't really wanna, you know, they, they don't require as much looking at how many houses they had to touch base with, as many departments involved, but then you have your bigger events, that they wanna have an outdoor event, block street, more spaces involved, more blocking is involved, more departments are involved, and so, those are the events that you, we're going up on, because before that, it was all the same fee for everybody.
So it's not targeted at national night-out kind of parties in neighborhoods, it's more at, at either for-profit or nonprofits that do big events?
more at, at either for-profit or nonprofits that do big events, where is that, is that, would that be an example?
Well, we based, yes. We, well, we actually based it over 100 participants, so we didn't base it on the event itself, the type of event.
Okay. Counsel, are you clear on that?
I guess I need to clarify, if a neighborhood association is having a party out in the street for all their people.
You know, I mean, there is something that we could put in here that it would, nonprofits would not, it would not apply to nonprofits, we could do something like that.
I don't know if that, I don't know if you wanna do that, because you have, I know of one big event you have on downtown where you close off one of the streets for a number of blocks.
That is true.
It requires quite a bit of work on you guys and our public safety guys.
Several departments get involved.
Yeah.
So.
I'd hate to see it, yeah, I'd hate to see it, you know, preclude, you know, neighborhoods from getting together, you might think about how you, what you do on something like that.
Okay, moving, moving down, and we've, we've got a note to look at how that might affect neighborhood associations or homeowner associations. We have the parade fee, $10 increase. We have the right-of-way permits, and this is noise for repetitive days. Currently, $100 for the first two days, and then $25 for each additional. Requesting $125 for the first two days and $30 additional. Below that is the carnival permit, that's currently at $500, proposed to go to $750, I believe, if I'm correct, there's an extremely limited number of those that come through each year. And then the last one is to remove the banner permit, and I don't know much detail on that one.
Mayor, on the banner permit, we no longer have those locations where LPNL is setting up banners, so that's why we are removing that fee.
Thank you.
Or, or like, there's a rodeo in town, or those kind of banners announcing an event.
All right, council, further, any further questions on, the fees that come from the city secretary's office, we'll go now to environmental health if there are no further questions. Okay, let's keep going, Mr. Atkinson, page eight?
Okay, page eight, we'll get into environmental health, all of these are on page eight. Council, these are not very, they're not incredibly aged fees, but if you'll recall, we've talked in the past with Mr. Walker, we're pretty far under the market, we provide a very high level of service through environmental health, so we are trying to keep moving those up. So the first category is for food manufacturing warehousing of less than 1,000 square feet, that's a $25 change, and in fact, these first, actually, all of them on the page other than the two deletes, will be $25. So category one is 1,000 square feet or less. Category two, the next line down, 1,001 to 5,000, and then the really large facilities at greater than 5,000 but less than 10,000. And then anything that is over 10,000 falls into the today 500, the requested 525 category. The next one, if you recall, we changed the ordinance to allow the pets on the patios at the outside portion of the dining. We put a fee in there, we don't need to do that, we're asking that that fee just be dropped and go away. Swimming pool permits, these are public or semi-public pools, these are not private backyard type pools. Today, 300, asking again for 25. And then the next one are the standalone interactive water features, same thing, 25 there. Currently, though, an interactive feature that's in a pool carries a separate permit to the pool, so they have to have two, and we're saying, if these others are found to be acceptable, we'd like for that one to just disappear. So two, two deletes, and then $25 requested on the food and warehousing and on the pools.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
What's an interactive water feature?
I'm real, I don't have my glasses on, but I'm really hoping Stephen's out in the audience, and he's gonna run right up here and tell us.
It's gonna be a different, it's gonna be a different Stephen.
How about the other Steve, Stephen O'Neil?
The real Stephen is not available here right now, but an interactive water feature, ma'am, would be like a splash pad or something of that nature, it could run the gamut for any kind of recreational water feature that doesn't involve a, a pool of water.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Mr. Atkinson, let's please continue.
Okay, the next page, page nine, these are unique to municipal court. So we have a service fee that processes the state piece of the traffic fine. It's 10 cents, it's asked to go to two, but you'll see why here in just a second. So that is $1.90. The second is the fee for judicial support, this is also on a state, it's on the state side of the ledger. It's a nickel, it needs to go away, some of this are, some of these are statutory changes. And then the final is the reimbursement fee, again on the state side, it is $10, and it needs to go to zero.
I assume that's a statutory change?
Yes.
So the change on, on 6415, at least on the, the service fee, is to help offset some of the?
Yes.
Questions on municipal court fees, council? Let's please continue.
Page 10, the first two lines represent some requests from the library. So the first is the test proctoring fee. That is today $20 and has been $20 for quite some time, we're asking to take that to 25, and that's really just trying to cover our staff time to put somebody in there and proctor a test. The second from the library, these are the rentals of our community rooms in the libraries, so three of the four have those. Today, they're $30, we'd like to bring those to $35 to do that. Questions on the library, then I'll move into the museums.
Is that an hour?
No, it's just.
It's the room.
As long as they wanna use it?
There is a limit, I wanna say it's four hours, but Brooke's in the room. Yeah, four.
I guess we're concerned if we moved it to market, something closer to a market rate, that people wouldn't use them? I mean, that still seems that we, there's no way we can cover our cost at $35.
No, we don't, but we make those rooms available to, to events that might struggle otherwise.
Okay, fair enough. Please continue.
Okay, moving down into the museums. Group tours at the Buddy Holly Center, and these are not school and not scout events. Today, that's $2 each, that needs to be five. The next is the Buddy Holly Center admissions, so this is not associated with a group, not school, not scouts. Senior fee today is $6, asking for eight, so a $2 increase. Immediately below that is your general admission, which today is eight, and asking to go to 10. You're gonna see the same logic applied also at silent wings, so if you come down for the next three line items, those are silent wings, and those are the same proposed changes.
Museum questions? All right, swimming.
Okay, the next is lifeguard training. Today, 150, requested changed to 200. Below that is to do recertifications for CPR. Today, 35, requested 50. If both together, this is not new, this is a recertification for lifeguarding and for first aid, today 35, and requesting that to go to 75. The next set will be for Burrow Huffman, so if you have questions on what we're doing related to swimming, we'll take those.
Please continue.
Okay. So council is well aware, the Burrow Huffman complex has recently received $7 million investment. That is a premier facility, certainly in our grass fields, new dirt has been brought in, new irrigation, reseeding, new restroom facilities, the grass is as good or better as it's ever been out there. But in addition to the grass, Lubbock is now home to a full synthetic turf tournament soccer complex. Several of us were able to make it out for the grand opening, and that's a neat facility. It's a facility that's already getting a lot of use, so we need to formalize, we need to put in place the fees for that. So, starting with the actual tournament complex, $2,000 per day. These fees have been run through our local groups, and they've been contrasted with similar, but we'll call them lesser, facilities around the state. For practice or for other games, $40 per hour per field, so $2,000 rents you that complex for the day. $40 gets you one of the synthetic fields per hour. And if you wanna think about that for a minute, let's go ahead and flip the page, and let's keep looking at that. So the next page is to turn the lights on. Those are lighted fields. We don't always have 10 and a half hours of daylight a year. So, the lights are $20 per hour per bank or per, per field, the way the lights are installed. The next one is for us to provide a site supervisor, and there are certain uses, certain conditions on those complexes that we require us to have a site supervisor out there. So that needs to be on top, and that's $25 per hour. We then go to callback services, maybe if they didn't need it, it was a practice use of that field, but they end up needing one of our folks to come out, that's the per-hour fee for that. The next is maintenance staff, so two people minimum, this is per hour. This could be required at a large event, it could be required of renters if, for whatever reason, they're just not keeping it up, but that's, that's what we will do there. We are going to put in the field rental litter deposit, $500. There is a $1,000 facility deposit, and a $200 security deposit. We've got a tremendous asset out there, it needs to be used, but needs to be taken care of. And I fully hope every one of our renters gets all their deposits back, but if they don't, we have a way to go in and take care of things. Questions related to Burrow Huffman?
Ms. Joy?
I guess the one that caught my attention was the tournament fields, the synthetic, $40 per hour for practice?
Did, did you all run that by other facilities, comparable facilities?
They did, and we'll ask Ms. Witcher to come up, and she's been very involved in that.
Okay. I'm not saying it's too high, I'm saying it may be too low.
Good evening. Yes, our rec staff did a comparative study across the whole state, we also worked with Market Lubbock and Lubbock Sports. It is fairly cheap, but looking around, oftentimes, parents might pay like $5 to $10 per child to go to some of our private sports complexes to practice, so we felt like we were still being competitive with what's local. Does that kind of help? I don't wanna name other venues, but I have a comparisons sheet.
If you compared it to a comparable facility, what did you find?
I don't have that information with me right now, but we did look at, like, Lubbock Cooper ISD, I believe, has a field that they allow for rental, so we looked at that, we also looked at some of our private sports complexes, I don't, is it Apex? And there's some other soccer facilities that I know people can rent locally, so we looked at what people typically charge.
But did you go to other cities?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We have, Ronnie, I know I'm looking at you, but I didn't bring that spreadsheet, we have an entire spreadsheet that I'd be happy to get for y'all, that compares different cities across the entire state.
Okay, thank you.
We'll, we'll bring that tomorrow.
Hey, Brooke, before you get too far away, do, do we require security on an, when we rent, when we get to a certain size event, do we require that, that, that security is hired?
I don't believe we do at a sports field, I can speak to different venues, we definitely do, like, at the Civic Center, and some of our in-kind service events that Becky was talking about earlier on streets, always, if there's alcohol, there's security.
I just think it might be, I think we went through, we, Stephen and I went through this in a previous life with requiring security, and I just think that.
Is it required? I know, like, Lubbock Soccer Association always has security out during the games, just, I know that from my current life, but.
So it's more in the, in the agreement, we're not, it's not.
Right.
We're not providing it, so.
We are not providing it for the different leagues.
Okay, all right, thank you. I know we had a, we had a disagreement, it's not one of our facilities, but at an eight-year-old basketball game a couple of weekends ago, that security was needed, so, you know. Not for the eight-year-olds, no, it was not for the eight-year-olds, shockingly enough. Okay, anything else on culture and rec? Okay, let's go to planning, it's on page 12. There, there are a number of these. Mr. Christian?
I was just curious whether we've had any inquiries so far about major tournaments out there, so that we could really truly test the waters on some of these fees? Have, have we had any of that sort of thing yet? I mean, these are all proposed, but we have, anybody say how much, and what has been our response, and do we have any books so far?
We actually hosted a three-man tournament the weekend of the opening, and we did.
Yeah, besides that one.
We used that, we used those fees, and then, I know John Osborne has reached out to me personally, asking about some dates that they're bidding on regarding some different things, and it actually wasn't a soccer tournament, it was Quidditch and some other events that they're trying to bring in, so we are working with them currently to try to bring some events in, I believe that one is in 2022.
Let me just follow up, so you have presenting, presented some of these fees to some potential tournament hosts, so to speak?
Yes, sir, we worked.
Any response back, or any pushback, or anything that?
They, they paid them, so.
The, the three-on-three tournament on the opening weekend brought teams in from Oklahoma.
Were, were they charged some of these fees too, is that, okay?
It's pretty neat to see, I hadn't seen three-on-three soccer before, but.
It's pretty fun. Mr. Griffith said he, he's never seen Quidditch, he might be, you know, wanna be out there for that one.
There may be an in-house Quidditch team if it makes, we, we certainly would offer team captaincy to Mayor Pro Tem.
I thought you said quiddit.
All right, let's move on to planning, please, page 12.
Okay, 12, 13, and 14 are fees from planning. These also, some pretty aged fees. So, we're gonna start, this one has, the first line has two changes, most of the rest of them only have one. So the first line is the preliminary plat- So, the first line is the preliminary plat fee, so this is an acre, and then twenty-five dollars per acre that's bigger than an acre, preliminary fee. Today, and in recent memory, one hundred dollars is the plat fee, twenty-five dollars an acre as you go over an acre. We're asking to take that preliminary fee to a hundred and fifty, that's the bulk of the work, take that fee to a hundred and fifty and increase the per acre by ten dollars. Okay? And then, as you continue down, we're now moving into the final plats, and they're also divided up by different acres, not changing the base fee, and the, and the final plat has now been approved, it's being filed of record, many of those are our obligations and responsibilities, not change the base fee, but change the per acre fee from twenty-five to thirty-five, so ten dollars again, just as you saw above. That carries all the way over through page thirteen, and it keeps going for the first Let you all think on that, and I'll carry the rest of the page out. We actually had posted copy fees, and we are just asking, go ahead and take those Questions related to the various plat fees?
I, I assume we're taking those fees off for, for copying because we're emailing to people and letting them do it themselves?
We just, we're not doing much of it.
Because, I mean, there's some of the, if, if we were, if we were to hit, have to, I'm not sure we even color, cover our cost on a color thirty-six by thirty-six, so I just assume we're out of the business of doing that.
And, and we don't want to be in the business of doing that, we don't want to be the copy center.
We'll send them, we'll send them the file and they can print it themselves.
Yes.
Questions for planning? Let's move to page fifteen for, I think the final of our general fund expenses is solid waste.
So, we've mentioned these a couple of times today, this is the tipping fee change, and again, tipping fee is trash across the scale, paid by the ton. Today, thirty-six dollars and fifty cents, and this is for just standard trash that's coming in, private haulers, haulers bringing trash in from other cities, twenty-five cents a ton, and then the special waste that comes in today is sixty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, we're asking for forty-eight cents, again on the ton basis, to come in. And just for those that are listening, our residential customers are not taking trash across the scale in, in doing this.
My recollection is that either last year or two years ago, we, we did an analysis, looked at the, sort of a regional analysis on this?
Yes.
And that we were below, at or below the, sort of the median for that, does that sound, is that accurate?
That, that is correct. And in fact, Mayor, as that was being done, your facilities committee actually went and toured the facilities and watched how that works and so forth.
Okay, counsel, any questions on solid waste fees? Ms. Atkinson, is that a, is that a good, is that a good place to stop?
Yes, sir. We'll pick up on the expense budgets tomorrow.
With all due respect to administrative services and city attorney, I know you all were getting ready to come up here and do, do your deal, but...
There's nothing to say, sir.
Okay, all right. So, we shouldn't expect a dog and pony show from you tomorrow?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Goodman said he's available to help. Okay, counsel, it is, it is seven oh nine, we appreciate your, your time this evening, we will reconvene tomorrow at three-thirty, it's a great day in Lubbock, Texas, Lubbock City Council is adjourned.